I apologize for our tardiness, but I will call this meeting to order. And this morning's invocation will be by Pastor Dan Brier's. Pastor, if you'll come to the podium.
Thank you Chairman, for availing this opportunity to pray for this supervisor's meeting. Father, we just come before you, you are the almighty God, and we worship you and praise you. God, the heavens, the earth are ordered by you, and God, we just give you and acknowledge you for your greatness and your power. I ask God that you would just afford your divine protection over all of those that are in harm's way, the fire departments, sheriff's departments, all those who are in capacities to protect the people of this great county. And Lord, I just want to thank you right now for all the great and awesome things that you have done. I pray that, Lord, you forgive us for past bad decisions that were not in accordance to your will, nor into accordance to the consent of the people. And Lord, we just pray now, your blessing upon these supervisors, because I believe that they have been placed here by the ordained will of God and by the consent of the governed. And we just thank you, Lord, for your many blessings. Let peace prevail in this meeting. Let wisdom be bestowed upon these leaders. May they have the mind of the will of God for this great county. And Lord, we just praise you, because we understand that unless the Lord, God, governs this county, we labor but in vain. And so we give you praise, we give you glory, and we give you honor. For we ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Dan. If you'll follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah. Chair, we entertain a motion for the legislative session to be held on August 19th, 2013, at 9:00 AM for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-43103.
Second.
Motion and second. Questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Community and their legislative reports. Supervisor Johnson, do you have a report this morning?
Yes, sir. We had a webinar was put together for the counties on what the new threat hazard identification risk assessment was all about. It was given by a senior management, manager of emergency management and homeland security, and he spoke about how it has become important to assess risk for all levels of government and the steps involved to implement it. It was first introduced in 2011 in a homeland security grant project, and has become quickly popular around the United States for its efforts to build on risk assessments already in place, while at the same time identifying desirable outcomes, particular to specific risks and/or threats. They set the level of capability a community needs to prevent, protect, and mitigate and recover from these risks. Use the capability targets to decide how to identify, obtain, and use resources from the community. Their number one priority is to implement the national preparedness system, which outlines an organized process for everyone in the community to move forward with preparedness activities and achieve national preparedness goals. Currently, it is not required at the county level by the federal government, however, all counties in Arizona this year are going to start their threat evaluations, and I believe Mojave County is getting involved in that also. I, along with Supervisors Brotherton and Angus, attended the NACO conference. In my cyber, cybersecurity, some of the highlights of that or lowlights of that, the major thing that came out was that pay matters, you know, what we pay our people, it really matters. We have more devices now than people in the world. We need to work on awareness, education, and the workforce. There are places putting on cyber challenges to get the best and the brightest, and the last cyber challenge they had, Boeing offered an entire team jobs. Seven of them were from Cal Poly, they were seniors, and one was a high school kid. Another thing that's been brought up is should we be licensing our cybersecurity folks, you know, the same as we do hairdressers or anybody else, to make sure that we have some kind of requirements, so that people aren't claiming to be cybersecurity people, and they aren't. One of the biggest problems we have is 60 to 70% of the problems are with our employees and their passwords. We have problems hiring IT personnel because of our salaries. Many organizational chiefs, security officers, is the highest paid employee in any organization. And private security is our biggest competitor. We compete with compensation packages compared to private sector. Another thing that they brought up was, we might want to look or consider moving our IT staff off a salary scale. We need to perform gap assessments, develop roadmaps, plan for future impact controls and internal controls and automatic controls, deploy applications with whitelisting technology, establish a standard secure configuration of operating systems, implement automated patching tools for application, implement auto patching tools for operating systems, and the limiting of admins privileges to only a very few. We only need to deal with top-tier vendors who have security built into their systems. They were also talking about maybe upgrading and doing six-month background checks on our IT personnel, so every six months, we do a background check on them. Inventory authorized and unauthorized devices of work, and vendors must have up-to-date Another thing to look at is our cybersecurity tests, we need to remove those from the Freedom of Information requests. Also looking at possibly separate line item budgets for the IT cybersecurity people reporting directly to the manager or administrator. We're going to get appliances to monitor emails, both in and out, your virtual private network, many are afraid to be using that now. One of the things that was brought up was an assessment team. Idaho has done this, where they got volunteers from other counties, and a county will request them to come in and check their security. They do this for free, the counties will pay for room and board while they're there, but they do it on their own time, and it's worked out real well and helps, especially when you have smaller counties that might not have the money, or even large counties that don't want to spend the money to do the right thing. It works out really well, so that's something we might look at doing. Also with the environment, energy environment, and land use steering committee, resolutions of importance to Mojave County, where the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers levy vegetation policy, making that a lot more user-friendly and supporting the Keystone Pipeline. Public lands moved ahead with their policies. That's basically it, I know we've got a full schedule, so anything else that we have, I've passed upon all the brochures, and I'm sure the other two supervisors have too, that we brought back from any vendors that were there that it might have been of interest to our people here. I believe that's all I have, and I'm sure. All, the only other thing is, we, there's a national magazine, and Arizona's part in it, the only county that was mentioned in the national magazine was Mojave for our allowing of weapons in the libraries. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Brotherton?
Yes, as most of you know, Hildy and I went to Fort Worth, Texas, and some of the things that we were mostly interested in there were the workshops and conferences on our public lands. And I don't know if we all know this or not, but when we became a state, the federal government had promised to the states that after they became states, they would give us back our public lands, our federal lands that they had. Now, several of the states just would not take no for an answer, and they have already received their lands back. They have been given the lands back, and they only have about 5% public land now, where we now, we have like over 50%, some 75% of our lands remain federal lands. Now, and of course, that takes away some of our ability to finance our schools, our education, it takes away our ability to manage our own land, including our grazing. And these things are just our heritage and should be in our power to govern those things. Now, actually, Utah even has a House Bill, House Bill 148, which they are in the process of adopting, and they really have outlined the use of their lands and the desire to take them back completely. So, NACO is calling upon the towns and cities and counties to do all in their power and influence the support of the western states, the elected officials, including particularly the governor, attorney general, legislative authority, to fully implement the transfer of public act and secure the transfer of our public lands to the states, with the time being of the essence. So, we are going to be working on that, I know at least some of us are, and I feel like that all of the supervisors are going to join us in really working on taking back these lands. The Supreme Court has called these promises that they made solemn compacts, bilateral agreements, and trusts that must be performed in a timely fashion. So, we will be working on that, and we will keep you apprised of the accomplishments we make.
Excellent. Thank you Supervisor Brotherton. Supervisor Angus?
Well, real quick, one of the, and this was my first NACO, and it was very interesting. I learned a lot about the way the counties come together and lobby the federal government for the issues that mean the most to our counties. One of the things I was most interested in, they had many workshops about wellness. As the chairman of the EBT Trust, I've learned a lot about some of our strengths and weaknesses as a county, always looking, looking for ways, we are looking for ways as a board to give the employees better benefits at lower costs. And we were surprised to hear some things at the county that we are really not very healthy. I don't think that comes as a surprise to anybody. But what came as a surprise to me was how well wellness programs work when they're implemented correctly. So, one of the things I did was make sure I went to these workshops and spoke to other county managers and supervisors and wellness coordinators who have put in place wellness programs that work. And it's good for everyone, it's good for the employees, it's good for their families, it's good for the community, it keeps costs down. So, in the months ahead, I'll be working with the EBT Trust Board to put together some kind of plan, I'm actually very excited about it, and we will keep you posted on that. Like Supervisor Brotherton, Johnson, I do have a lot of material I brought back, and if anyone is interested in anything that has to do with NACO, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Angus. Supervisor Moss, do you have any reports this morning?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Can I just have a brief report, just letting everyone know that the alert, the flood warning system has been expanded by three additional units, and this has been a follow-up for our Dean Peak Fire, and we've had an excellent cooperation with the BLM in placing those, actually rather immediately after the fire. So, that's the extent of my report. County administrators' report?
James, John. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. Our employees are continuously doing wonderful things, and this is evidenced by the emails, the weekly emails, almost daily emails that I send out, and also by our press reports. And our organization is extremely easy to be proud of. And we've also had presentations by different department heads on advancements that they're making, whether it be in technology or in other areas, which is incredible. So, this morning, I'd like to recognize one of our Public Works employees, Jed Noble, he's our engineering manager for Public Works. He was selected just recently to deliver a presentation on Mojave County's leading-edge pavement preservation program to the Western Regional Engineers Conference in Nevada, and I want to congratulate Steve and his people for that, thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Okay, approval of the May 20th, 2013 Board of Supervisor minutes? Motion approved.
Second.
Of a motion, a second by Supervisor Moss. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. To answer the call to the public, those wishing to address the board at the call to the public regarding matters not on the board agenda, must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request form located in the back of the room. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing a matter on a future agenda. The first item, we, first person we have signed up this morning for a call to the public is Stephen Robinson. Mr. Robinson, if you'll come to the podium.
My name is Stephen Robinson, I live in, on North Bowie Road in Golden Valley. Mr. Chairman, supervisors, staff, I've been really, many people have been really pleased with the effort to make the county more transparent, with having a call to the public, giving the people an opportunity to speak is just one example of that. There's been other things like the open books and the, now the line item budget that's online and available to us. There is one area that I would like to address you at this point. Two years ago, Senator Ron Gould discussed a group in Phoenix called Arizona Tax Research Association. This organization has been incorporated since 1940, and their goal is to be the taxpayers' watchdog. I tried to work with and introduce them and to come back into the county to start meeting with the finance director and with the budget people, so that they can help be the watchdog for the people of Mojave County. It was unsuccessful this year, but I'm hoping that you will work towards putting them in contact and working with our staff to help answer questions, to be speaking on behalf of the taxpayers. It's been said that, well, we have, you know, we get audited, and we are overseen by the Auditor General's office, and that's true. But ATRAM and Kevin McCarthy meets with every one of the other 14 counties through the state, from Greenlee to Maricopa, and I believe it'd be very important and beneficial to the citizens of Mojave County to have someone that would be speaking on their behalf, with the bona fides and the credibility to ask legitimate questions. In fact, I noticed that Kevin McCarthy, in his first full year with the county, came and spoke right here in a budget hearing and asked some questions, along with several other people, and he also was on the panel that helped put together the reform of the transaction privilege tax, or the sales tax regimen in Mojave, in the state of Arizona. So, I believe he'd be, it'd be very good and beneficial to the citizens of Mojave County that they have one other organization that is speaking on behalf of the citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. I'm familiar with Mr. McCarthy, I've worked with him over a number of years, a number of years ago, and if he would like to get in contact with me, I'd be more than happy to entertain his questions.
My name is Mark Shaver, I live at 4054 West Killer Drive in Meadview. I'm here to talk about the Lake Mojave Rancho district situation. It is unacceptable to have it operate at this level, and over the last several months, we have dodged some fairly major bullets out there, and things have turned out the way they have, especially in the last one involving the bus. I dial 911, so obviously, there's a report of me actually being there, so what I have to say, hopefully you'll, you'll take it to heart, and maybe, you know, sit up a little bit more and pay attention. We cannot operate that fire department as it is, it needs to be readdressed. We know that the county has the ability to fund, because it's paying Mr. Flynn money to address that situation, but we cannot sacrifice the safety of our people for expedience. That's just, it's just, you can't do that. What was reported in the newspaper about how we responded to it is kind of misleading. It took them over four hours to actually get there after the water was, actually, the road has been cleared. There was two responders there from EMT from Lake Mojave, but they were ineffective and couldn't respond anyway. Communication with the other side of the river, or the wash at that time, was not, wasn't there. You know, it took a modified four-wheel drive to take, to cross that lake, or the wash, in order to get a message to the sheriff's department, who finally showed up an hour and a half late, two of them. The idea that there was an air rescue there, no, we were there for a whole duration, we were there. What would have happened there would have been just a cleanup, it wasn't our rescue. There are other incidences that have happened in which, which has to be addressed, there was one incident where, I wish the picture would have came out, but it looked like an EMT was operating out of the back of his vehicle. That's not how you respond to a situation, I'm sorry. It's my understanding that you may not address me directly, but one of your responses to have staff bring this up on a future calendar, and I hope you will take the time today to do just that, so we can come up with ideas and our thoughts, and present them to you in a more balanced and effective way and view. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaver.
Gentlemen, ladies.
Good morning.
I am...
Could we have your name and address?
Ladonna Cypress, P.O. Box 1464, Dolan Springs. January 27th, I called the fire department for an ambulance. They came out the house in reasonable time, but the paramedic that was there, I don't think he was experienced as a paramedic. He stayed outside the wagon, he sent me in for a list of my husband's medication. When I came out, he was still standing at the back of the ambulance, and I said, "My husband is not breathing." And he got in there, and they took off. By the time they got to the fire station, he had expired. And I think it was the response, that they should have been there, they should have had somebody there that could do something. I don't think that he would have lasted, but at least there would have been somebody there that would have helped. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cypress.
I usually have a wheelchair, but it didn't work at the door.
Ms. Josie, if you'd like to speak from there, that'd be fine.
There a microphone out there?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Just take your time, little sister.
Thank you. My name is Patsy Jos, I live out in Dolan Springs, 18353 Peacock Drive, it's off of 21st and Perspere Road. In January, I didn't know that there was problems with the response team there in Dolan Springs at the time, but anyway, it was the third week of January, I came down with chest pains, and of course, my son lives behind me, and he came over, and they, we called 911. And evidently, whoever took the call, I don't know whether it was Kingman, I don't think it was in Dolan, they had me down as abdominal pain, yet I had chest pains, all the signs of a heart attack. And it took them 45 minutes to get to my house. Now, when the gentleman came, they seemed very professional, they did all that was necessary in checking me out, but the only trouble is 45 minutes. Then I asked them, as they were transporting me to Kingman, "Where did you come from?" "Well, we came from White Hills." I said, "Well, where's the Dolan Springs group?" "Well, they were busy." I didn't know at the time, they weren't there. So, I was very fortunate, as it turned out, that I just had chest pains and no, nothing very serious. But the object is, we do need something out there at the Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire Department to help the citizens of the community. There's other expenses or other things that have happened that have come to me, but I really feel those people need to speak up for themselves. So, I thank you for listening to my plight, I'm just hoping that you can get our area, district back up to power, so us, the people, senior citizens, can have better help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Josie.
Why don't we have a wheelchair brought down the ramp, and then that would be a lot easier for her, maybe?
Good morning, my name is Lee McWilliam, and I am the president of the Chamber of Commerce in Dolan Springs. And you've heard our plight with the three people that spoke ahead of us, and it is a very serious situation, we have a lot of elderly people that live out there, and they are very dependent upon such services, as you've just heard. Plus, the fact that two men on duty on a 24/7 day is just not even a bare bones coverage for our area out there. And I'm sure that the administrator who's taking place and handling it is doing as good a job as he possibly can. It was a shock to all of us that we were in such a wild condition, we, no one knew it, it just hit us boom, they kept it a pretty good secret among, among the board and stuff. The thing of it is, is there's another, another factor out there that we need to think about. Everybody there that has a mortgage on their house and do not have adequate insurance on it, can have the mortgage recalled, and that's not a good situation. The other thing is that also with not very much coverage... The other thing is that also with not, not very much coverage, and the insurance companies can raise the premiums to the point where even if you could get them, you can't afford them. And the fact of it is, is everyone knows that when we have a fire there, the house usually burns to the ground. And then, if you're lucky enough to have insurance, you are able to possibly rebuild again. These are things that I think that the county needs to, if we have any funds from any place, even the state, wherever, if there's any way we can get some extra funds to come out there, we need to do it. If we can get some extra people from, say, Golden Valley or something, that they could station one of their actual firemen out there with our firemen to help us. Or if there's someone here who could help us in a fact of getting, organizing the volunteers for the area, that would help us a lot. But it's, it's a fact that we can't sell our property without, it's underwater already, and when we get into the insurance things, it's impossible to sell out there, even if you are elderly and wanted to move somewhere else, you are stuck. So thank you very much for listening.
And I'd like to thank everyone to, responding to call to the republic, to call to the public, I'm sorry. This morning, we have a presentation from Tom DeGomez, Regional Specialist and Area Agent, Cooperative Extension Agent from the University of Arizona. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning. Thank you so very much, Chairman, for allowing me to make a short presentation here this morning. Thank you to the other supervisors here in the room who are allowing me to address you for a few minutes. I am Tom DeGomez with the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension. I work mostly in Coconino County. Since Rob Grumbles, the agricultural extension agent, retired around the 1st of April, you've been without a county director in this office. The director of Cooperative Extension asked me to fill in as the interim director for a while. I don't know exactly how long I'll be doing this, running back and forth from flagstaff to Kingman once a week or so. But I'm happy to be here. And my main purpose to be here today is to assure the Board of Supervisors and the citizens of Mojave County that Cooperative Extension is still here, we're still viable, we're working towards developing, continuing our programs, and then developing new programs as we get the opportunity. One of the plights that the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension is under right now is that we are currently funded at 60% of where we were in 2008. So I want you to kind of think about that, everybody in the room. If you had a budget that was 60% of what you had in 2008, you might be kind of hurting and bleeding. We are trying to do some things to stop this bleeding. One of the places where we're bleeding is certainly in Mojave County, where a few years ago, we had three county agents serving the county. Now, we have one, who is Jerry Olson, who does the 4H program and community, or youth development programs. There is the potential of a decision package going before the legislature from the University of Arizona to bring a few more, bring some of those dollars back to where we were in 2008. Without this decision package, we're, we're going to be hard-pressed to fill the two empty spots here, the empty spot in Coconino, the empty spot in Yavapai, the empty spot in, should I go on? We have numerous empty spots for county agents throughout our system in Arizona, as you can imagine, with 60% funding. And that kind of funding are the ones that, that funding is what supports people like me and Rob Grumbles, are these permanent faculty lines. We cannot support permanent faculty lines with county funds. We can do it to some degree, well, we can't do permanent funds with soft funding from, say, USDA, ARS, or organizations like that. So we, the only way to really replace our permanent positions at this point is through a decision package. Now, we do have a few dollars available to stop some of the bleeding, and we're hoping to get a position in Mojave County in the next six or eight months, maybe a year, to replace at least either Rob Grumbles or to replace Lynn Durant's position. She was working in the family consumer health sciences arena. But as a way to try to stop some of this bleeding, we currently have a position open for a master gardener coordinator. You may know that Rob Grumbles was doing that work. And for a school gardening coordinator, Nina Bracken was doing that work. So we hope to hire either one or two people to take those positions. And then, we also have a contract signed with the State of Arizona to bring a First Things First program into our office to look, to do some education for the zero-to-five-age group. The other major thing I wanted to mention today was that we are in the middle, are starting to get a strategic planning process underway for the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension statewide. What this means is that each county in the state will have a focus group come together and give us input as to where we should be headed. This is a good opportunity, since we have a new dean and a new extension director within the last year and a half, that we're starting to look at our organization very closely, as you can imagine, with all the holes that we have, with the low funding that we have from, from the state, that we're really taking a hard look at what is needed in each of the counties. So I would encourage you to send a member of the board to our focus group to give input from the board. Chairman Watson, I've sent you a letter asking you to either come yourself or ask for one of your board members to come and to help on that day when we do that focus group. I thank you so much for the continued support that Mojave County gives to the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension. I know that you feel that we have given excellent programs in the past, and we will continue to do that in the future. And I'm happy to take any questions from the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeGomez. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you very much, and I hope to get around and meet Supervisor Moss and Angus and Johnson in the near future, as I get a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Flynn, Administrator to the Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District.
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for asking me to be here today at the request of Supervisor Brotherton, just to provide a status report for the Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District. I have two gentlemen with me here today. One you'll recognize, Chief Pat Moore from NACFed, and the other is Gabe Boldra from the James Vincent Group. And Gabe does all the backroom accounting and finance for the financial workout we're doing at Lake Mojave Rancho's. This morning, I'm just going to give just a little bit of a background, talk about some of the financial facts on the ground. When you all appointed me as the Administrator, some of the interventions that we've done to try and reverse what has been a downward slide financially for the district, and then the FY14 budget allocations, which we just started in July, and a timeline on when we might anticipate that the Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District will return to an independent special taxing district and operate as other independent special taxing districts have in the state. And so, we'll just, background. So February 6th, Administrator appointed by the Board of Supervisors to manage the Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District. The district was deemed financially insolvent, and analysis began immediately to not only continue services, but to figure out how we were going to turn, turn the district around. So part of the financial situation, employees without pay for 30-plus days as of February 6th. We had about $150,000 in back payables, and that included the payroll. That payroll amount amounted to $102,000 and change. Our RLC, our revolving line of credit through Wells Fargo, that the bank honors through the county, through the servicing bank, stood at $437,000, and we had almost $100,000 other long-term debt obligations. We started immediately on the financial workout, implemented in conjunction, not only with working with the Treasurers Office, but with the County Finance Department, who funds basically the district now. And so, $150,000 was provided immediately, and we took care of the back payroll at $102,707 and paid some of the essential payables. We're just about done with that $147,000 of paying all that back. We have a few, few outstanding items, items left. Just, just a little background. So we, we had a $437,000 in, on our revolving line of credit. All of our tax receipts now that are collected by the Treasurers Office go towards extinguishing that debt to Wells Fargo. And then, we have other non-tax revenues that come in, and those help offset the money that's provided by Mojave County to continue the ongoing operations of the district. You can see, and I'll just hit some of the highlights here, about some of what we found was that the annual payroll and related expenses amounted to almost $1.5 million for the fiscal year that we just got out of, and the actual collections and/or the actual revenues that came in were $1,065,000. So you could see, we were upside down by almost a half a million dollars there. So by the time I took over in February and we started winding that down, unfortunately, there wasn't just a lot of time left. So, and you'll see on the graph here that we come up with how, kind of where we're at right now. So 100% of the property taxes, even if we collected 100% of the property taxes, I would point out, we have about a 20% tax delinquency there in Dolan-Meadview area and in the district. And so, we'd still be, even if we collected 100%, we'd still been almost $300,000 shy on that. And I know that's a tough situation, and a lot of what you heard this morning from the residents, and my empathy is with them. I've been in the fire service for 35 years, worked in the rural fire service for many of those years. I, I understand that, I understand that, that need that says, wow, we're, we're out here by ourselves, and we really need, we really need to have the confidence that the help is on the way when it's there. Unfortunately, as you're well aware, in county operations as well, a majority of all of our expenditures are, are labor. And so, labor is, and so, we're, we're already upside down in labor. And unfortunately, that's where you need to cut to be able to bring things back into, back in the line. So mitigation staffing reduced, FTE positions eliminated through reduction force. We've eliminated all nonessential expenditures. If it's not keeping the lights on, putting fuel in the trucks, and making the vehicles go back and forth, it pretty much has been cut. We've started with the sale of all nonessential and surplus assets. We've been selling surplus, any surplus equipment, ambulances. We had some fleet vehicles that were on lease purchase. We've already eliminated those. I would note that we have almost 30, still have $30,000 a year in lease purchase payments that we are trying to eliminate through the disposal, the disposal of those assets, and that's ongoing. Service delivery outside the jurisdictional boundaries was also eliminated. That was problematic in the expense side as well. On the management side, we've inked a deal with Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District to take over contract fire chief and daily supervision of the operations at LMRFD, and cost savings of 70%. That formerly cost the district about $185K in management overhead. We've contracted with Medicclaim Data Services for ambulance billing, and that's allowed us to alleviate that from being, have to responsibility on staff. It's actually upped our net ambulance, our net amount of ambulance revenue. And so, the ambulance revenue is really the majority of what comes in that we help offset what Mojave County provides in, in funding while we get the, the district back on its feet. And so, this is just a graph on budgetary comparison. Gabe, did you want to mention anything about this?
Yeah, just kind of highlight some of the things Mr. Flynn had already discussed on the budget comparison. When Mr. Flynn was appointed for fiscal year 13, there were some significant variances in the methodology used to calculate the budget versus what the actuals, the district realized, especially on the revenue side. For example, there's about a million projected in tax revenue with an actual collection of only $788,000. They had some $300,000 in prior year revenue that they anticipated coming in. In addition, you'll see on the comparison chart, the ambulance revenue, or I should say, the non-tax revenue was budgeted much higher, and there alone was about a $400,000 variance between what was budgeted ambulance revenue and what was actually realized. So when you see the four-year, fiscal year 14 revenue graph, obviously, we're looking at a much lower projected collection than the prior fiscal year. However, we've used more, I should say, accurate data and methodology to calculate that budget. So we're looking at, as Mr. Flynn said, we've got $840,000 in tax revenue. However, with the delinquency rate, we're probably going to collect around $777,000. In addition, on the ambulance revenue, we're only looking at about $280,000 in ambulance revenue collected for, for the year. On the expense side, you could see, obviously, personnel was the highest expense item that the district had for fiscal year 13 budgeted. That cost was significantly decreased in the amount of about $700,000 by cutting the workforce and contracted with Northern Arizona Consolidated. One area that we did increase some expenses, again, is on the management side, and that's part of that is that agreement with, with Northern Arizona. So instead of increasing the personnel cost or having a similar high personnel cost, we've transferred some of that cost over to the management side. And then, obviously, the more significant item, which I'm sure the, the board is concerned about, is the debt repayment. And we have increased our debt service allocation, $310,000 over the prior year, with the majority of that going to not only pay off the remaining balance on the Wells Fargo line of credit, but also towards repayment on the loan from the county. And we have some more on that as Mr. Flynn continues.
So we ended fiscal 13, which just ended June 30th, with about $158,616 expenditures exceeding revenues. The RLC balance was paid down to $233,000 from 4/37. We still owe $204,000 as of June 30th on that. And as I said before, all the tax, all the property tax revenues go to pay that down. Will be completely paid to Wells Fargo by November, and the Mojave County loan balance currently sits at $276,000. And so, this is just a graph of some of the financial positions going forward from February until June. And Gabe, did you want to add anything on this, or?
No, this just, again, kind of depicts what the district, the situation the district was in financially when Mr. Flynn was originally appointed versus where we ended the fiscal year. As you could see, there was actually a negative cash balance, and actually, the fund balance was, had a negative fund balance as well. And come the end of the fiscal year, we actually increased the cash balance slightly. Obviously, didn't hold too much cash, but actually was able, with between repayment of debt, able to get actually a positive fund balance come the end of the fiscal year. So just wanted to illustrate that for the board.
So going forward, fiscal year 14, which just, just began here in July 1. Budget's established at $1.2 million, $741K in property tax levy. We do, we are running a ARS Chapter 158 tax rate override, so the tax will be at 3.68. And we're anticipating $126,000 of that will be, will be delinquent. So the collection rate will be much lower. Payroll and pay-related expenses is reduced to $396,000. We will have extinguished our revolving line of credit balance in October, November, when the majority of taxes come in. And we've allocated $477,000 in the total amount to either debt reduction or revenue delinquencies, and that's both tax and ambulance. So one thing on the ambulance side, I think it's important to remember, even though we bill at a certain rate for ambulances, we're only allocated certain payment amounts by both Medicaid, Access Medicaid and Medicare, and so that we have to account for that. So it's not as simple as just billing out and just hoping that we get, we get all that in. So this graph just shows our loan balance projections. The blue line is the Wells Fargo revolving line of credit. You can see where it started, and it will be finished up in November, and we'll be out from under that. And then, for the Mojave County loan, that's offset by ambulance revenues, but you can see that that goes up substantially, because between now and when we get taxes in in October, November, we're relying on the good graces and the consideration of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors to fund the ongoing operations. And then, as we get taxes in and that balance is paid off on the revolving line of credit, then all the, all the rest of the money goes back to repaying Mojave County. And the end result is, at the end of fiscal year 14, we project, and so this is dynamic, kind of depends upon what our tax collections are, that they come in at about 20% delinquency and our ambulance... twenty percent delinquency in our ambulance collections. We project that at the end of the year, we'll finish off with owing the county a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. And so, we can, and that will be at the go-forward on July one, two thousand and fourteen. And at that point, there's some decisions that can be made. We can actually go back to Wells and use the line of credit and become completely independent, or depending upon how the Board of Supervisors wants, and the county staff want to do that, we can continue to work with the county. So, either way, but next fiscal year, the district should be back to being solvent and operating as an independent special taxing district. And with that, I'm happy to, oh, we've got more. Operations and service delivery, Chief Moore.
Good morning. As Mr. Flynn's alluded to, our staffing out there, we're ideally hoping to have three people on every day, two people in the Dolan community, one in the Meadview community. And that decision was made when we sat down and created the plan through Mojave County as well, based upon the funding that we wanted to put out there. We've transitioned the dispatch over into the nine-one-one Kingman Regional, which we see, I believe, a significant savings as well as improved service delivery. And then, we've also turned the SOGs over into the NACFD. So, we're trying to do the best that we can out there with the staffing that we have, obviously, and if we had more personnel, we would certainly like that. But keep in mind, additional staffing, additional personnel extends out the loan that we would be on the hook for with Mojave County. So, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Flynn.
So, I know that there's some public outcry to provide additional staffing at the Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District. I'm happy to work up the financial numbers on that for the Board of Supervisors and county staff. But as Chief Moore stated, any more staffing, and you could see the material amount that staffing costs, any more staffing that you add, you just have to anticipate that we'll just continue that loan balance, we'll just continue out. So, probably would not be back to being independent in fiscal year fifteen, which starts, you know, July one, two thousand and fourteen. We'd be extending that on to future fiscal years, but that's certainly at, you know, the behest of and the consideration of the Board of Supervisors and county staff. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the Board of Supervisor may have.
Have any question?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Johnson?
The money you have coming in from property taxes and then your other money, are the collections covering your payroll and everything now, or are you borrowing money every month from the county?
We borrow money every month from the county, sir.
And you're going to continue that for another couple of years? Because you're not paying us off until November of two thousand and fifteen. Do you think this is, I mean, this is your job. Do you think this is a viable fire department? I mean, are we just, you know, continuing paying something that is going to collapse on itself? Mr. Chairman, this gentleman is out of order.
Mr. Shaver, if you please, will address this a little later, Dave. Mr. Flynn, please.
Chairman, Supervisor Johnson. So, we'll be, so the money that's coming in right now through agreement with the Treasurer's Office from taxes, all goes to pay the Wells Fargo revol, so we've got two debts. We've got Wells Fargo, which is the revolving line of credit, and we have the money that we owe to the county. So, all the tax money right now is going to pay off the revolving line of credit. As soon as that's paid off, and that'll be November, this coming November, then all the tax money will go towards funding the operations of the district, and part of that is repaying the county. So, at the end of this fiscal year that we're in now, we should owe the county approximately a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. That will be the extent of everything that we owe. That money will be paid beginning in the next, in that next fiscal year. So, in the fiscal year that begins June, July first, two thousand and fourteen, which is the FY fifteen fiscal year, we'll have the county paid back, and the district will be, again, be a functioning, independent, special taxing district. So, that's my indication of how the Board of Supervisors wanted this, not specific to the timeline, but specific to the folks in Dolan and Meadview require emergency services, and they have an independent special taxing district in place. There's no other way to provide those services. And the county has stepped in with intermediate financing so that the district can remain functional at some level, and so the levels you can see are reduced from what they were in the past. But I can tell you, based upon the property values in that fire district, and it's no different in fire districts all across the state, the property values in that fire district, that fire district isn't capable of maintaining the service levels that they had pre, when it went financially insolvent. That's been the problem all along, is that they were basically overstating revenues and then matching their expenditures to overstating revenues. And so, that had been a process going on for, you know, two years, eighteen months, two years, and they had carried a RLC balance forward from the previous fiscal year into the last fiscal year, and that just kind of exacerbates itself. So, unless you're willing to just overall reduce expenditures down to a sustainable level, that district won't ever be solvent. And so, that's what we've done here. And unfortunately, because of the hole that was dug financially, it takes a significant amount of funding to get them back up to where they should be so they're on a level playing field.
Right. So, all the money that comes in from taxes, and there's probably not that much coming in between now and November, that's going to pay down the debt service for Wells Fargo.
Yes, sir.
So, Mojave County, the rest of the citizens are on the, are paying for all their fire service in that area up until November, when hopefully taxes will come in. Now, do you foresee that, I'm sure you've looked at a history of the taxes, how they've come in up there, as of November, the rest of the taxpayers won't have to subsidize? We will just hold a note for, or we can still have to subsidize the day-to-day operations?
There may be some subsidy, but it'll be minimized. So, we'll have the peak amount that we owe to the county at that point. And then, from that point forward, there'll be little ups and downs. We'll probably draw a little bit of money every now and then, but for the most part, we'll be paying money back. And so, let me just point out that the amount of money that the county provides us every two weeks, we have a payroll run and a payable run every two weeks, is offset by whatever non-tax revenues we bring in. So, right now, we're backed up with Medicare payments because we had to change the system on how we bill that. So, we have a big backup on Medicare. So, typically, when that's cleared, we'll realize, we probably have a backup of about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars right now in Medicare. That will come in, goes directly to the Treasurer's Office, and then we apply that towards whatever our expenditures are. So, for a couple pay runs, we won't ask the county to give us any money. So, the, our non-tax revenues are always offsetting what the county provides in funding to keep the district operational. We're running about, you know, on average, fifty-eight thousand dollars a month is what it costs to keep that district operational at its current level, is fifty-eight thousand dollars a month. So, you figure six hundred, six hundred thousand a year, basically, what they did run at one point four million, but it, I mean, if you don't reduce those expenditures down to the level they are now, we'll never, we never get it right side up, unfortunately.
What about the, deferring maintenance on vehicles and that sort of thing? And say, by the year fifteen, November fifteen, when everything's paid back, are they going to be in the hole again because vehicles and stuff haven't been?
Well, we, part of that is we've budgeted some of that for the maintenance as well. I have a part-time employee that works for me full-time that is willing to go out there and has been going out there as a mechanic to maintain those from the NACFD side.
Thank you. That's all the questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Any other supervisor have any questions? Mr. Flynn, Chief Moore, Jim, thank you so much. I'd like to say thank you on behalf of the board for doing such a splendid job in reducing the exposure of the district. And we will certainly entertain those comments from the people previously on the service level, but I want to take this time to thank you for an excellent job performing what you've done. Thank you so much.
Chairman members, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And next, we have Craig Sullivan, Executive Director of the County Supervisors Association. Good morning, Craig.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's my pleasure to be here with you today. For the record, my name's Craig Sullivan. I'm with the County Supervisors Association. I've also got some good members of our team, Todd Medexa, our Legislative Director, and Kristin Supola, our Legislative Liaison. And it was very important for us to be here today to report out to you about the activities of our association during this past legislative session, and we'd like to cover some of that with you. But just as importantly, start setting the pace for going forward as we prepare for the next legislative session, because as you know, January is right around the corner, and what we do this summer and the fall often will determine how we're able to represent you and your county and your interests when we get down to the State Capitol. So, what we've got is a brief PowerPoint presentation for you, and I won't cover all of the items on the slides, but please, Mr. Chairman and members, if there's anything that you'd like to discuss, feel free to stop me. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The outset, for folks who aren't familiar with our organization, I'd just like to describe it. The County Supervisors Association is a coalition of all fifteen counties. All of the members of the Boards of Supervisors serve on our board. Our primary function is to serve as a research and advocacy organization, an opportunity for counties to share best practices. We're basically the one-stop shop for the county Boards of Supervisors based down in Phoenix, working with the state legislature. We have a series of services that we provide, and I won't break down all of those for you, but I do want to point out that you have before you our association year-end report, and this gives you a greater detail about what we do and select outcomes and activities over the course of the last fiscal year. As members of our Board of Directors, it's important that you have information to evaluate our service to your county, and so I offer that to you to review at your leisure. What we'll focus on today is all about the last state legislative session and how we did pursuing the objectives that the county set out for us. When we met a year ago in Sierra Vista to identify our strategic plan, we had three primary goals. Obviously, job one was about the state budget. And within our state budget advocacy, we wanted to restore the county share of lottery revenues. We wanted to restore HERF payments to the county, and we wanted to eliminate an ongoing shift from counties to fund the Arizona State Hospital. So, the budget priorities were number one. But we also were prepared to adopt and initiate bills that were submitted by our client counties. Every county has an opportunity to do that on an annual basis. And our third directive was to organize around the myriad bills that are put before the legislature that impact county operations. And as you know, there are hundreds of those every year that just get thrown out before us. And so, we'll report out to you on our progress on these three core directives that we took to the State Capitol, beginning with the budget. It's very important to our organization that we start early on our advocacy, and we did that last year as we typically do. So, the first thing we did in the fall is we organized an education effort for all the counties to get the word out about state cost shifts to their constituents, to their legislators, and of course, to the executive. This county was an excellent partner in that whole effort, and I can't thank you enough for your work in helping the whole coalition operate that way. In the middle of the legislative session, we also worked as a coalition to remind legislators why our priorities were important. And the striking items there were contained in a letter signed by all of the county Boards of Supervisors that identified two key things. One is that unlike the state, which perceives itself as coming out of a recession, the counties are still lingering in the recession because of the lag in property tax values. Statewide, the net assessed value drops in the next fiscal year, six percent. Mojave's is about one point four percent decrease in the next fiscal year. But if we look back the last couple of years, Mojave outpaced the state average in the last couple of years. So, you've really had to bear a lot of that here locally as the state's been shifting items to you. We also wanted to remind the legislature that the federal government is shifting a lot of costs down locally, too. Supervisors, you mentioned your time in Fort Worth, talked about the Payment in Lieu of Taxes program, critical public lands resource for your county. Those resources have been cut by the sequester. They're likely going to be cut going forward. I think it's about three point five million for this county. Those are big dollars, and as those are reduced, they're going to impact you. So, we needed to remind legislators that we are continuing to struggle as counties with all the state cost shifts as well as the federal cost shifts. Now, that message was heard, and we made some incremental progress restoring dollars. All told, we were able to get nine million dollars in relief from the state to the counties. What's meaningful for Mojave County is the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is basically your share of the lottery revenues. Now, what's important about this are a couple of things. One is that the initial recommendation on the lottery did not include Mojave County. It didn't include Yuma, Yavapai, Maricopa, or Pima, and that was enormously troubling to us. So, we had to spend a lot of time working with you to get advocacy in to your legislative delegation, and it really was because of your communication with Senator Ward, Representative Borelli, and Representative Goodell, that that issue got salient for Mojave County and that those dollars ultimately were restored. And so, it was a great example of how, where we may not be in the position we want to be when we get into this session, if we're working together, we can get things done. And they really helped get these dollars for you. Similarly, there was progress in phasing out the cost shift to the Arizona State Hospital for sexually violent persons. So, we were pleased with that, although quite frankly, I thought that should have been completely eliminated. There was really no reason to me why we couldn't get that completely off the county back. I'll explain to you a little bit why the legislature resisted that. Probably most disappointing was HERF. The HERF shift to DPS is continued in the next fiscal year. Those of you who were with us a year ago will remember that the HERF money used to be shifted to MVD as well, the Motor Vehicle Department. Last year, working with the legislature and governor, that shift was undone. This year, they felt as though they could not go further, but we think that it's ripe for pushing in the next legislative session to get those dollars to you. And you can see the magnitude for this county listed for you. So, I mentioned a little bit about why couldn't we get some additional dollars, say, on HERF or on the SVP shift? And this helps explain a little bit of what the legislative lens was. The legislature basically was looking at balancing a fiscal year fourteen budget that they estimated a structural imbalance that was made up for with cash reserves. Every restoration of dollars, they would then look at three years out, fiscal year sixteen. What would that, what would a change, say, restoring HERF do in fiscal year sixteen? And so, every item was through that lens. And you can see that for their projections, they're seeing a modest surplus in fiscal year sixteen. Now, those are projections, and that all may change, but this is the balance sheet they basically were making all of their decisions off of. Importantly, and it's important because counties are linked to the state for financial purposes, this structural balance in fiscal year sixteen is a function of the healthcare expansion and the assessment associated with it that was put in place. Absent that, absent that expansion, their fiscal situation would be worse in the third year. I don't make that as a judgment on the expansion, it's just a financial fact about what their balance sheet looks like. And so, if the lawsuit is successful, the initiative drive, their numbers will change, that it may impact the counties. I wanted to show everybody a seven-year history of cost shifts to the county, because I think it's very important. When the state started addressing its budget shortfall, it immediately started impacting county operations. It's been seven years that the county has shifted, state has shifted costs to the counties. And when you look at a county like Mojave, you can see a very high accumulated number of impacts over the seven-year timeframe. We're estimating that about eleven point one million dollars of county resources have been either siphoned off or eliminated over the course of the recession, all at the hands of the state. And for those who depend on county road building and maintenance, almost six million dollars of your highway user revenue funds have been siphoned off to fund the Motor Vehicle Department and the Department of Public Safety. You can also see here that from a county standpoint, there was significant improvement in eliminating impacts from fiscal year twelve to thirteen, modest improvement from fiscal year thirteen to fourteen, and significant work to be done, particularly as it relates to HERF and the ongoing shift with the Arizona State Hospital. And so, it's important that we and constituents not lose track of the fact that though the legislature may score one-year impacts, when they're out there on the stump, we need to look at these impacts over time. And I'd like to move on a little bit to talk about the bills, but before I do that, Mr. Chairman and members, are there any questions about the budget or the budget situation at the State Capitol?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson?
You mentioned modest surpluses forecasted in the budget. Isn't that modest surpluses forecasted every year, and every year they're wrong with the state legislature?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, your recollection of their accuracy is correct. They're often quite off.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Any other supervisors have any questions? Thank you. Craig, please proceed.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Members, then we'll move on to the bill side of our report, and again, there's going to be a lot of bills on here. I'm not going to go over all of them because you have a long agenda. Stop me if you need anything. I mentioned that counties can bring bills to us to run on your behalf. State statute is filled with touchpoints to county operations. What you do is implement county law. We ran six bills for the counties this year. Three of them were enacted into law. I don't think we took a bill this year at the request of Mojave County, but if there's items that you're looking for next year, we'll look forward to serving you in that capacity. We also partner with the Arizona Association of Counties. When it comes to the legislature, we're in the supervisor business, they're in the other elected official business, but we work closely because we're serving mutual interest. This year, they had 10 bills that they ran, five that got to the finish line, but very importantly, because it's of mutual interest, is Senate Bill 1261 that morphed into House Bill 2305. These were changes to the election process, and importantly, here were some changes to the pebble process, allowing for folks who are not using the permanent early voting to move off of that list and save the county some money. And I know I've heard this concern in this county in the past. ACO did a good job initiating that and taking it to the finish line. And Supervisor Johnson, we appreciate your role in ACO as well, because you're very effective at making sure the supervisor perspective is at their table. We also will work with counties on bills that are not endorsed by our board in total. Our primary criteria there is that it doesn't harm other counties. Here's a quick list of counties that we helped out in that regard. Now, one of the areas that we spent a lot of time on at the legislature, but we don't spend a lot of time on breaking down, is what we call our reactive advocacy program, and this is really where Todd and Kristin excel. These are items that are put in the process that we didn't ask for, we didn't put in there, but we have to deal with them. We have to respond to them. And it happens every year. There's some issue. Fire districts was an issue that came up this year. We were able to work with Mr. Flynn on that. Bills like the former 2178 that impacts Fort Mojave and the incidence of taxes there, where you're able to contact us and say, hey, get involved in this. This is what we're here for, and that's why we want to serve you. Quick list of policy areas that we focused on or areas that we got pulled into. The big one this year, because it impacted your financial bottom line, was the governor's proposed reform to the transaction privilege tax base and those collections. In the beginning, we were very concerned, not on the state shared revenue side, but on the local excise tax side, there was real potential for harm. In the final analysis, after months and months of spreadsheets, the proposed modifications and amendments to that really made the impacts to the counties fairly de minimis, and there's some potential for actual revenue enhancement, and so we think that that item is going to work out in the end for the counties. But you can get a quick expanse of the various items that our team worked on on your behalf. Todd and the team amended several bills. These are items that we were concerned about when they came into the process, but we were able to sit down with the proponents and address those concerns. Some bills we just had to flat-out oppose. And I think the key takeaway here is that unlike some previous years, I think legislators were very receptive to hearing from their Boards of Supervisors and hearing from their advocacy team, and I think it bears out in the fact that most of the bills we were concerned with didn't advance through the process, and so that was a real good thing. It's always worth mentioning Governor Brewer. She has stepped up repeatedly over the last several years to veto bills that were of concern to the counties. There were a few this year that she vetoed that were of county interest. None of them were particularly damaging. And then as a quick summary, I always like to focus on kind of the lessons learned, and I'll focus on the top and the bottom. Obviously, we had some incremental improvement on our financial situation, but there's still a lot of work to do. And so when we organize our efforts in the fall, it needs to be about restoring the HERF dollars, making the lottery distribution permanent, getting you off the hook for funding the Arizona State Hospital. But the bottom item really points to where we need a lot of collaborative effort on. We have seen over the last several years this movement towards what we call divide and conquer, and what Todd and my team often points out is pursuing political expedience at the expense of good policy. This just means that when we put up opposition, they'll start saying, well, wait a minute. Does Mojave care about this? Because if they do, I'll take them out of the bill. Does Yavapai care about this? If they do, they'll take it out of the bill. And they'll narrow it really to the last county standing, if you will. It's a big problem, and it's something we need to work on as a coalition, because as we saw this year, Mojave was isolated on the $550,000 lottery money. There was no reason for you to be excluded from that, and we need to make sure that there's no movement in that direction going forward, and so that's an area we really want to spend a lot of time on. Two last quick slides for you. We don't have a board meeting in July or in August. We get you all together again in September, but our team is on the road. We're working in interim stakeholder meetings. We meet with the county managers. Our next meeting is August 16th in Flagstaff, to just keep talking about the issues that we need to get before the legislature. What we need from you are items or proposals, if you're interested, to submit for our legislative discussion. That deadline's August 16th, if you could please be mindful of that. And in that regard, when we have all of the county's legislative proposals for next year, we will have a, what we call a legislative summit. It's in October. It's hosted in Hila County. It brings all of you and your colleagues together, along with the top county management, and what we do there is, we really, it's an organizing moment where we say, what are we going to do this next legislative session? What matters to us, and how are we going to get it done? And you all are a key component of that, and I hope that you'll participate in it. And I'd like to just close by acknowledging the fact that in many counties, we work with maybe one supervisor, perhaps the manager, and in this county, we're very fortunate to have all of you involved, and I really appreciate that. And I'm very appreciative for all the work that your county manager does and his team, because when we need information about the counties, we can always count on a response and perspective from Mojave County, and so thank you very much for that. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, that concludes my remarks, but I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Craig. Any questions for Mr. Sullivan?
I have a comment. I believe that Supervisor Angus would like to meet with you regarding the repeal of House Bill 2178 next session. Is that right, Holly? You wanted a legislative task from the county, there's one.
There you go. Thank you.
We'll be starting early.
I also have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
Yes, Craig, you heard firsthand some of the problems we're having concerning the fire district, so I probably am going to want to revisit with you on some of the problems with the fire district, and maybe we can go back with some reasonable legislation that we can get passed to help.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Happy to do that.
Anything further?
Would like to take this time to thank you very much, Craig Sullivan, for your expertise and leadership in CSA. They return a great deal of work for us for the investment that we put into it, and I'd like to thank you personally for the great job that you do, but also to Todd and Christine, they do a wonderful job also. For the few dollars that we send to CSA, we get a great return on investment, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Members.
Thank you, Craig.
Would the board like to take a few minutes?
Oh, I'd love to.
Okay. We'll return in 10 minutes.
Okay. Thank you.[1155.24]
You know what you want about that.
Yep. Yep. We'll get there. The worst of all world. Do we want to reconvene here?
Yeah.
We don't, we're lacking one.
Well, recon. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we'd like to reconvene our meeting.
It seems to be holding.
Okay. All right, the next item we have is the consent agenda, items five through forty. Make a motion for discussion or...
I move to approve the consent agenda, items five through forty.
Okay.
Oh, I thought you asked for, sorry.
Motion, motion for discussion, so we can...
Motion for discussion, thank you.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Any items for be pulled? Supervisor Johnson.
Thirty-five.
Supervisor Angus.
Thirty-four.
Supervisor Moss.
None.
Supervisor Brotherton.
None.
And I have none. Chair would entertain a motion to authorize the consent agenda, items five through forty, with exceptions of items thirty-four and thirty-five.
I move to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of item thirty-four and thirty-five.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second by Supervisor Brotherton. There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Item number thirty-four. Motion for discussion.
Move to discuss.
Second.
The motion is second for discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Item thirty-four.
This, this item is to approve the hiring of Catherine Pennell as Mojave County Library Director, and I'd like Ms. Pennell to come down and introduce herself, so we get to know her. She was gracious enough to come down last week from Las Vegas to have lunch with me, and I got to know her, and I'm very excited, and I want to welcome you to Mojave County.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to introduce myself, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Kathy Pennell, and I am the candidate for the Library Director here in Mojave County. Currently, I am the Library Director at the North Las Vegas Library District. North Las Vegas is the third-largest city in Nevada. I've been there for about sixteen and a half years with the district, originally as the, for about three years, as the Library Services Manager and Administrative Coordinator, about seven years as the Assistant Director, and now it's been about six and a half years that I've been the Director of the Library there. I look forward to joining your organization, should I be fortunate enough to gain your approval today, and work with you and the county management, the staff of the Library District, and the Library Advisory Board to further the libraries here in Mojave County and continue to provide great library services to the residents.
Thank you, Ms. Pennell. And I'm sure we'll be welcome you to Mojave County.
Thank you.
Welcome, I see some library people here, and thank you, and I just wanted to welcome her to Mojave County.
Very good, Chair would entertain a motion.
I move to approve Catherine Pennell as Mojave County Library Director, Range twenty-nine, Step Six, at a hundred and two thousand, four hundred and forty dollars annual salary, effective August nineteen, two thousand and thirteen, and authorize up to one month's salary for moving expenses.
Second.
Motion and a second by Supervisor Angus. Any further questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And again, welcome, Ms. Pennell. Item number thirty-five. Motion for discussion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Mistress Chairman, the question I have of the county administrator is, can you go over the cost overruns that we're having on the court building in Havasu?
Mister Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I would like to call the Public Works Director down, he's administering the project, and see if we can field some of your questions. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Watson, members of the board. Supervisor Johnson, with regard to the Lake Havasu City Court Expansion, the Board of Supervisors, at the time of a contract award, did appropriate a contingency budget for the project, should unforeseen circumstances arise or other circumstances arise, as presented to staff for the completion, the necessary completion of the project. Without a complete accounting of the specific change orders that have been processed, I am aware that all of the change orders, to this point, have been targeted toward satisfying comments as relates to meeting the building and/or fire code requirements for building occupancy permits subsequent to the completion of this project. I think one of the more significant ones that stand out concern the repairs to a fire riser, for the purpose of providing adequate fire supply to that riser and fire main. That was uncovered when the fire riser was opened up, and Lake Havasu City Fire inspected it and informed us of some necessary repairs.
Thank you, and we're, we're getting close to our, we're over, what, ten percent right now, or we have a fifteen percent contingency fund budget now?
Mister Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, without the accounting in front of me...
Right.
I am relying on memory, and I believe you have characterized that rather crackly, that we are approaching our contingency limit, however, due to a very proactive management of that project by our engineering team, we are remaining confident that we will carry out this project within the project budget inclusive of that contingency.
Thank you, I just wanted to bring it so the other, the other members knew exactly what was going on down there, and some of it is, you know, like Mister Lutowski is saying, at least my opinion, should have been covered in the designs, I mean, we shouldn't be going fifteen percent over on, on things that are, you know, fire safety and those things should have been put in, that's all I had, Mister Lutowski, thank you. Thank you, Mister Lutowski. Any other questions? Make a motion to approve item number thirty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Supervisor Moss for the approval of item number thirty-five. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. And now we move on to public hearing. Item number forty-one A, open the public hearing for the discussion and possible action regarding the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number Two oh one-three dash zero nine-nine, and that's the amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from urban development area to low-density residential, urban development area, medium-density, and urban development neighborhood commercial land use designations to suburban development, suburban residential land use designation, and an amendment to the Virgin River Communities Area Plan from the low-density residential, medium-density residential, and neighborhood commercial land use designations to a suburban development area land use designation to allow for the development of a residential subdivision, and amend Exhibits four-point-four and, and six-point-five of the general plan to match for the assessed parcels number four oh two dash seven-seven, nine-eight, zero-zero-nine-C, zero-zero-nine-D, in the scenic vicinity of Mojave County, Arizona. Anyone wishing to speak to item number forty-one A? Anyone wishing to speak to item forty-one A? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion for... Discussion.
Mister Chairman, I don't want to be premature, but I would move to approve the adoption of E O S Resolution Two zero one-three dash zero nine-nine.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second by Supervisor Brotherton for the approval of item number forty-one A. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Item number forty-one B, open the public hearing, discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution Number Two oh one-three dash one-hundred for the rezone to allow a residential subdivision in the scenic vicinity, west of Scenic Boulevard, between Shirley Drive and Chaparral Drive. Do we have anyone in the audience today wishing to speak to item number forty-one B? Anyone wishing to speak to item forty-one B? Close the public hearing on item number forty-one B. Chair would entertain a motion for action.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Supervisor Moss for the approval of item forty-one B. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Item number forty-two A, open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action, the adoption of Board Resolutions Number Two zero one-three dash zero one oh one, amendment to the Mojave County General Plan, and amendment to the Virgin River Communities Area Plan. Designations to allow development for recreational vehicle subdivision, and amend sub amendments number six-point-four and six-point-five to the general plan to match for the assessed parcels number four oh two dash thirty-two, one forty, one seventy, one seventy-one, one seventy-two, in the Desert Springs vicinity. We have one person signed up to speak to item number forty-two A. Bruce Rogan.
Morning, Mister Chairman and members of the board. My name is Bruce Rogan of four sixty North Palm in Desert Springs. I'm just new to the area, bought a house last December, and I'm renting it out, it's a leased property, and the reason is, at some future point, I wanted to retire there. And as soon as I got involved in the community, I started to write a history book of the town. It's now about three hundred pages, it's covered all the dates back to the Anasazi, through the Moapa Indians, and all the way through the Mormon Settlement, through, it's a very wonderful book, and as I was sharing it to all of the community and interviewing them, I found out about this planning meeting that I missed several weeks ago, and I was very concerned because the mailing did not come to my address notifying me of this, that hearing two weeks ago, and so I made an affidavit of it, and Christine Ballard mentioned she was going to get you all a copy of that affidavit. Have you all received a copy of that affidavit that I sent? She said she was going to give it to you for pre-reading, before the, today's meeting?
It's in the backup.
Yes.
Okay, okay, and, and since that time, I have kind of petition from everyone on Palm Drive, except for one family, there's thirteen names on it, or fourteen names on it, thirteen different residences that are owned, I will be happy to give you this after the meeting and presentation or whatever, and I'd like to cover just a few things that it talks about, just there were two major areas, but first, if I could just say, I've never been involved in community before, and this, I'm just grateful that I had this opportunity to get to know my neighbors, and to meet them, and to talk to them, and every single one that signed this was so happy and so eager that somebody was taking the initiative, because it's such a sacrifice to come down for like the whole day, to come down to do this, because we live so far away, and they were all grateful, I got hugs from most of them, it was just a wonderful experience. So I, here's the, the main things that I need to, to point out, this is what they sign, I'll give you, I'll submit a copy of this as well, they're concerned about significantly reducing the home value, we all, that's our biggest investment, all of us there, and there are, all these people were homeowners, none of them were renters. We're very concerned about potential sewer problems, I know this is kind of cart before the horse, but I know this has been an issue in the past, the person who owns this property, in a public meeting of the water company specifically stated he was going to put sewer in that area, and nothing has ever happened. We're also concerned just about many other issues that are, I see my time is running low, let me just go through, just the rural space, just looking at the V R cap, the Virgin Rivers Area Code, or the area plan, I read through that entire thing, and I found out these four items that are violated to me completely by the terms of that, this high-density residence, one is it, it neutralizes the rural open space, which talks about that in Section Three, Policy fourteen-A, which says that its promotion of less intense development density pattern in those outlined conditions should encourage larger lots for more wide-open lifestyle, and that's really what we seek, is we seek a lifestyle, that's why the, the fourteen people have moved here for those fourteen years, the other three items that are violated were endangered species and hydrology issues, it was a huge drain off, which goes right through to my property, and hillside protection, and who would I give these materials to?
You can submit them to our clerk.
Okay.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Any questions, are there any questions? Yes, we have some question by Supervisor Brotherton.
Was, was this material presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
No, that's what I apologize for, I was not known about it, they did not communicate it to me by mail, went to the wrong address, it went to a house two owners ago, since I knew, then it did not come to me, it came to other owners that are long since gone, and I did not see any signs, there was nothing posted in any community area, so I had no way of knowing anything about that last meeting.
Mister Chairman, I just question us taking the material before it's submitted to the Planning and Zoning, I think we should not consider something that they hadn't considered. I feel like it should probably go back to them.
And that would be the procedure, what we would do is send that material back to Planning and Zoning, if we were to table this item today...
Yes.
Then instruct them to take it back under consideration with new material.
Sure.
That's our prerogative.
I think that's what we should do.
And Chair would entertain a motions for such.
I move, I move that we table this item for a period of at least one month, in order to remand the issue back to Mojave County Planning and Zoning, for them to consider the input of the resident who did not get notice, Mister Myers, in addition to those materials that we wishes, wishes to present to this board.
I have a question for... Well, I'll second for discussion, but I have a question. I guess my question would be, we have one person showing up here saying they didn't get it, not disputing they didn't get it, but these are posted. I guess we could ask Ms. Ballard to come forward. Everybody else had ample opportunity to come there. It's gone through the planning and zoning portion. I'm ready to vote today. I guess we ask Ms. Ballard, is there any violation of the posting requirements?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, concerning posting as it stated in the state statute, yes, the rezone and the general plan were posted according to state statute.
May I ask a question? Exactly where was it posted according to state statute?
State statute requires notice of the rezone and notice of the plan amendment to be posted on the property, the subject property, the property that is actually going to be the beneficiary of the action.
And do we have any reason to doubt Mr. Myers' statement that he didn't receive the notices of these meetings?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Moss, actually, we have reason to believe he did not receive notice of these meetings. The labels that were printed out via our system showed, and by the way, it's the applicant who prints these labels out, showed, one of the letters went to a place, I believe, in Idaho. The other one went to a previous owner.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard.
But that's not the applicant's fault? That's the records that we have at the county?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Johnson, it's an issue of how the G I S, the G I S pulls up the labels. It's how the G I S pulls up the labels that creates the problem.
Thank you. Did we have any... Did anybody show up to Planning and Zoning Commission in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, no, they did not.
That's my only question. Thank you.
How up to date are these G I S? I mean, how often are they...
Is that a question?
Supervisor.
When I applied, I looked on the computer online, Mojave County Census Office, immediately after I purchased it. I saw that it only listed partials on my lot. So I came down a special trip from Desert Springs on April fifteenth, tax day, and on that day, I went out, talked to various people, got all the paperwork put together to make sure that both of those addresses were in my name. They assured me it was all done. Went home, thinking everything was taken care of. I kept checking on the phone. I kept checking online, and it never showed, so I called up the office on three separate occasions, talked to them, and said, no, there's a lag between, just like what the supervisor is saying here, the G I S system, it takes about three months for it to get posted up. That doesn't just mean me is in this problem. It's anybody that bought property that has that kind of situation. There needs to be some kind of check and balance so that people get notified, like me, that are just new, or that the property hasn't gone through. So it still isn't there today. As of today, it's still not there. Now, I purchased the property December twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Do we have any other people in the audience that want to speak to this item today, item forty-two A? Sir, what's your name? I don't have you listed.
I'm Bruce Rogan.
No, there's a gentleman behind you that would like to speak to the issue.
Oh.
George Demiscus, representing the developer. I'm with Mazona Engineering out of Mesquite.
Okay, is there a reason why you didn't sign up to speak on this issue?
I figured I'd only have to speak in rebuttal. I didn't think there was going to be any opposition to these two items.
Okay. Is there any... Do you have a question? Any member of the board have a question to the developer?
No.
Just to say that most of the issues that Mr. Myers brought up about the environment, the hydrology, the sewer, this project was previously approved back in two thousand and four, I believe, two thousand and five. These issues were all submitted, approved, A D E Q approved the sewer system. We have an approved drainage plan for the area, and it's going to be a high-quality Harvey subdivision.
Sir, you want to move back away from this gentleman? Thank you.
Where people actually own the lots, and there's going to be a lot of amenities put in. It's going to be a definite enhancement to the area right now, which is nothing but a vacant lot. And it's going to include recreation centers, community centers, nature trails, pond, swimming areas, things like that. So I'd say most of these issues have been all submitted in the preliminary plant phase, and staff is aware of all that, and they have unanimously approved it.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
If I may, Mr. Chairman...
Certainly, Supervisor Moss.
May I make a rebuttal to what you said?
No, sir, not at this moment. Will I ask you back up? Supervisor Moss?
I move that we table this item for a period of thirty days, and we remand it back to the Mojave County Planning and Zoning Board in order to consider the comments of Mr. Myers and the additional materials he desires to submit.
Would you like to consider including forty-two B?
And the same would be hold true for also forty-two B.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to table the item forty-two A and forty-two B for thirty days in order to remand it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Any further discussion?
If I could, Mr....
I'll go ahead and get this to you.
My point is, or my concern is, that we are a government entity taking action which would affect people's property, and because of that we're doing that, my concern is, and I believe Ms. Ballard has confirmed it, that at least one homeowner has taken the time to protest notice that he didn't receive proper notice. And due process means notice and adequate opportunity to be heard. And if they weren't getting notices of these items for the period of this process, and now we have one gentleman who on fourteen days' notice, or eighteen days' notice, actually had the gumption to take the eight-hour round trip here, we ought to give these folks a chance to participate. Doesn't mean the result will change, but they need a chance to participate effectively.
I have a comment also.
Supervisor Brotherton.
I feel also like this is planning and zoning's... This is their job. And I don't feel like that we should override or do something differently based on some material that has been brought to us that wasn't taken to them. I think they should also have a chance to take a look at that material, because I have full confidence in them doing all of the investigation and everything, and bringing back to us a real fair results. So I think we should let them do their job.
Thank you, Supervisor Brotherton. Supervisor Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, I think this has gone through the planning and zoning process. It's had adequate hearings. Nobody has shown up to dispute this. One person's showing up now, and unless I'm wrong, they just bought the property in December. Doesn't mean they don't have a right to speak, but, you know, we can't just keep sending these things back with... People have money tied up in projects, and I would say I'm ready to make a vote on it today, but I'll go with the majority.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Angus, do you have any comment? Okay. All right, any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion is to table item forty-two A, forty-two B for thirty days for remand back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Aye.
Okay, we have... And those opposed?
Nay.
We have two. Okay, so probably the best thing to do is for us to go roll call.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Ballard has some information that she needs to relay to the chair.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Because in order for Mr. Rogan to be heard, we have to reopen the public hearing, which requires us to re-advertise and repost. It'll take us longer than the thirty-day span of time that the board has tabled the item to accomplish that task. The soonest we will be able to get this item to the commission will probably be September, and the soonest we'll be able to bring this back before you, following the commission's meeting, will be your first meeting in October.
How long has this process been going on? Is this the beginning of the petition? How long has this been... This item been going through the system?
In order to answer that question, Supervisor Angus, I'd have to take a look at the application. Typically, by the time it reaches, rezone reaches the Board of Supervisors, it's been in our system at least forty-five days.
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
I believe my motion was at least thirty days, table it for at least thirty days. So I think the time constraints that the commission and everyone else would have to deal with is taken into account within the motion. It could be ninety days, it could be one hundred and twenty days, whatever the time takes, it takes.
Thank you for that clarification. Roll call.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Brotherton?
Yes.
Supervisor Moss?
Yes.
Supervisor Angus?
No.
Supervisor Watson, Chairman Watson.
Yes. Okay, this item will be tabled for at least thirty days, possibly longer, whatever it takes to get back through the Planning and Zoning Commission. Item number forty-three. Open the public hearing, discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution Twenty Thirteen Dash One Oh Three for the approval of the Board of Supervisors' policy for implementation of a schedule for development as per A R S eleven dash eight forty-one point one for changes in the zoning district rezones. Commission recommended approval by a vote of six to two. Anyone here wishing to speak to item number forty-three? Mr. Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Dave Hollingsworth, Three Thousand One, East Dandy Divine, Kingman, Arizona. I'm representing as a director for Kingman Golden Valley Association of Realtors, also the Lake Havasu Association of Realtors, I believe, has sent you a letter, and I think Bullhead City Association of Realtors is sending you a letter. I also sit as a director on the Wardex Board, which is nine directors owned by the three associations, Havasu, Kingman, and Bullhead. We also serve outlying areas of Laughlin, Nevada, Blythe, and Needles, California, and Parker. And the consensus on that board also is to be against this. We are against the idea of a reversion when someone comes in and does a zoning. I've done... I've attempted to do this through the county for twenty-plus years, and have been unsuccessful in getting it done, was successful in getting it completed in the Kingman City many years ago, twenty-plus years ago. Our belief is this, as part of the bundle of rights that the owner of land in Mojave County has, zoning is one of the most important, and the investment land buyers that come to our county, without a doubt, will step aside from a piece of property if there's not a zoning in place on it, because they do not want to go through that month-long or months-long process. Neither do they want to have the public meetings and meeting with the neighbors, et cetera. Whereas the property owners do, and when they go through all of that process, your ordinance is as law, and they meet all the terms of that ordinance, all of the meetings, all of the meetings with the neighbors, and it is then decided ultimately by you as a supervisor that that is the highest and best use for that property, that that zoning should be changed. We believe that there is no nexus to have any kind of a condition such as reversion on that if they don't perform within a certain period of time. And the reason we say that is they've proven that that property can be rezoned to that. And if it reverts, it reverts back to a zoning that I'm very familiar with. It's a zoning that was put in place by the wave of a magic wand by a previous planning and zoning director, Mike Rosicky, in the county over thirty years ago, when he zoned this county, A R One, A R Five, A R Thirty-Six, A R One Sixty, A R M H, name it. He did that in front of a previous, the last five-member Board of Supervisors that we had, and they approved it. And we spoke as Realtors against that process at that point in time. We firmly believe that when someone proves zoning on a piece of property, it should stay that, no restrictions, no reversions, until someone else comes up and reproves it to be a better use, a different zoning. That's our case. I understand that staff and the commission, on one of your, I think it was item seventeen on your consent agenda, are going to have a public review of this. But we don't believe that this particular item should be part of that public review. We believe that it should be removed from the zoning process. And I'm here to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Do we have questions for Mr. Hollingsworth? Seem to be no question. Thank you very much. Anyone else willing, wishing to speak to item number forty-three? Close the public hearing on item forty-three.
Mr. Chairman, can we have Chris Ballard come up and explain exactly what this is? There's a lot of questions on it.
Certainly. Ms. Ballard?
Or Nick, whoever wants to.
Nick, would you care to come up?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity, and I just tried to explain it in a nutshell. The Arizona revised statutes provides, allows the board to put a time restraint, which basically a schedule of development on a rezone. Back in nineteen ninety-five, it was before my time, but the Board of Supervisors approved the extension of time policy for zones and for zoning and rezones. And basically, we are operating under that policy right now, more or less. And the back, the existing policy states that approve rezones subject to complying with development schedule for certain rezones, not for all of them. The ones that where the land use are appropriate for the area or situation, and that's the word, it's been used, then there should be no development schedule there. But whatever is not appropriate, then that shall be a development schedule. And the existing policy also goes on and establishes limits of the extension time. So for example, for adverse economic conditions, the extension could be only for one time according to that policy. And of course, the board can decide anything else they want, and practically, that's what's happening, that in most cases, we don't put, I mean, the Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't put a time limit on it, but gives hard zoning, but in some cases, they do. And there's some examples where, you know, it's been renewed several times. And then the procedure is that our Development Services Department looks at the schedule, and before the time expires, we send out registered letters, we try to find the developers, and then some of them disappear, can't find them, some, they come in. And then I think in almost every case that I've been on in the past few years, that the commission always recommended extension of time. So what we did, we put this item on the Planning and Zoning Commission agenda twice. First, we put it on for a workshop, basically, to discuss, and then, so a new policy and procedure was recommended at that time that would a little bit more reasonable, and basically, it would spell out the cases where, the most cases where there is no schedule of time required, and there's A, B, C, D, E, F cases. Basically, those are the cases where the zoning kind of... Basically, those are the cases where the zoning kind of fits the area, land use. So an example, if you have an area where most everything is zoned commercial, and then they wanted to use something specifically, a highway commercial that, you know, we don't put, we don't recommend, or the Commission doesn't recommend a time schedule, and that's usually, that's the way it goes through. But in cases where it doesn't fit the area development, such as you have a residential area, and then they want to rezone it for industrial, and which happened, and if I may give an extreme example, is Albiasa. You know, that one time, Board and everybody thought that was the greatest thing, and everybody in the neighborhood was against it, but it was, you know, decided what a really good thing for the county, and the Board voted for rezon, so it's currently zoned industrial. However, it's been a residential area. So that would be an example, an extreme example, but basically, this went through the Planning and Zoning Commission twice, and the Board has an option to either keep the existing policy, or throw out all the policies together, or approve a new policy which tries to strike a balance, and that was discussed in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission a couple of times, and this is the case in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Chris knows more of the details than I do, the history, and, but I'm glad to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Do we have questions?
Yeah, Mr. Hunt, as you know, this has always been troubling to me, that we have our planning and zoning people, and you, and I, you know, I know there's a lot of people involved in doing the studies, and going out, and taking pictures, and having hearings, and talking to people, and, and so we, we establish a zoning based upon, I believe, the good work that that Commission does and those people do. And then we say, but you only have a year or two years to develop this into this, you know? Well, with the economy, the way it has been, there's been a lot of things that have happened, you know, that people couldn't go ahead and maybe develop like they thought they were. But do, is this a real way to handle things? We do a zoning, and then no change in the demographics in two years, and yet then we just change the zoning back, really without a request of anyone. The property owner doesn't request that zoning be changed back. I mean, is this really an efficient way to handle these things, do you feel? I just feel like if we do all of this work, and establish that this is the highest and best use of that property, that should be the way it remains until someone comes along with a better idea, and requests, and gives us all of the information to do something different with that property. I just think this going back and forth, changing the zoning, and then arbitrarily in a year or two, if they don't do anything, then we change it back, and nobody really wants to do that, but, and it creates a lot of work for everybody. But I just, I just feel, myself, that that is, you know, we're just doing a lot of extra work that we don't need to be doing. We should leave it established, once it is established, until somebody comes in and does some other studies, and decides something else is better.
Thank you, Supervisor, President.
If I may, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Moss.
Mr. Hunt, if I could, as I understand it, the revision that you are submitting to us says that if a rezon occurs, but it fits within the neighborhood, it's going to be forever.
That's correct.
But if a rezon occurs, and it's not going to fit in with the neighborhood, but it was allowed to occur anyway because of the benefits to the wider community, that zoning only stands if the developer steps up and does what the developer says what he's going to do.
Yes, and in fact, the developer just has to make some effort, so just any, any effort towards that, and then, then it stands and can ask for extensions, and then it's up to the Commission and the Board to decide, yes.
And I understand the history, that when a developer is slow, because business is slow, and they don't want to run their machinery out there, as long as they stay engaged with the Commission, the zoning also stands. Historically, that's been the case, anyway.
That's correct.
Now, I have a question, because I was trying to think of examples, and what occurs to me is if we take a, we carve out a segment that's been zoned for something under our plan, and then we change it to something radically different, so it's going to be a time extension or not, depending on what this board decides to do. Basically, what we're doing occurring is land speculating. Is that correct? Am I correct in that interpretation? Is that a potential result?
It can happen, and that has happened. You know, many of these developers, when we try to notify them, you know, can't find them, so obviously, they not around, and they, we can assume they were speculating.
And I'm a, I'm a relatively newcomer to Mojave County. I've only been here eighteen years, so I'm wet behind the ears compared to some people on this Board. But when I first came to this, the county, there was a brand-new city called Sterling that was going to be put in around, on Highway ninety, or Highway, I-40 someplace, and that never came about, and because it never came about, the zoning reverted, did it not?
Yes, Supervisor Moss, that's another very good example, that Sterling, you know, that was, they wanted to have it residential, wanted to make a city, and then they wanted to put, basically, renewable energy zoning, and that's what they have, the neighborhood didn't like it, and I don't know if it's going to go or not. You know, Albiasa is another good one, it's probably not going to go, so.
Okay. So basically, the reversion, the time extensions, when the developer stops engaging with the Board, and it's done, it reverts back, it allows that land to be used for some other broader purpose, and not narrowly tailored to industry or something else, depending on what can be done. It's a flexible process, is what I'm understanding, is what you're proposing to us.
Yes, sir.
All right. I don't have any other questions.
Mr. Chairman, I think Supervisor Moss brings up some good points, and in the time I've sat on the Board, we've reverted, not a whole lot, but quite a few, and you'll notice the few requirements that we have at the end of, of the resolution that says, you know, you need to have a road and those things, and it's always because they've never done one thing, and it's like Supervisor Moss said, it's basically land speculation. I mean, there's been a few times when somebody who's on a payroll might show up and say, hey, I would like to have this extended one more time, but I see nothing wrong. Are we still going to be able to stop the speculation by keeping these on there with this proposed resolution that you have here today before us?
Yes, it gives ample notification to the developers, and goes through the Planning and Zoning Commission every single time, and like I said, in most cases, I've been there, they always gave extension when the developer showed up or asked for extension.
Right, but we'll still, with this, what's before us today, we'll be able to say, you've done nothing in four years, we've given you extension after extension, and Supervisor Brotherton, I agree with her, when times are tough, we want to keep people going, you know, hopefully, they can get their feet back under them, but we'll still be able to revert the zoning.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Mr. Hendrix.
Mr. Chairman, and I want to applaud Supervisor Moss for, he being so astute on the zoning issue, and basically, if we don't have a revisionary clause in the zoning, and I'm not promoting a revisionary clause in any shape or form, when the Board, when the Commission recommends, and the Board approves a particular zoning, we would have to look, and we will have to look, at the wide range of acceptable uses, because without a revisionary clause, that property is taking that zoning to the grave unless it's otherwise changed by the Board. And so, at any particular ownership, the myriad of uses acceptable in that zoning could be easily approved, and once the zoning's approved for particular uses, it's very difficult not to let that particular use go forward in the approval process. And I just wanted to make that clear to the Board.
If I can make a comment or question, Mr. Hendrix? And in my lawyer's speak, and I'm sorry, that's why I'm conditioned, what you're telling me, or I believe what you're telling me is, a developer can come in saying, I want to put in a Costco or some industrial use here, then a year later, because it's now zoned industrial, can put in a strip club because it fall under that broad range of categories. It's basically a bait and, it lends itself to bait and switching.
No.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, I would have to get concurrence from Development Services, but that's my understanding, that once it's zoned, and you haven't specified, haven't put conditions upon that zoning, which I believe is a difficult thing to do and questionable in, in state law, that the whole myriad of zoning would be acceptable under that particular zone. Yes, sir.
I believe Mr. Ekstrom might have more. When you zone something, there's a broad category of uses attached to that zoning. So if you go to, let's say, heavy industrial, which is essentially just about everything, if I remember correctly, and I'm not an expert, basically, I could say I'm putting in an IBM widget factory, but I could wind up with something far less socially acceptable because we decided to slap that heavy industrial or some other broad tag-on to it. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moss, in my experience, that has happened, and that's one of the reasons they're proposing this.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I guess the other question I would have would be, so why don't we just leave it the way it was?
And that is certainly an option. It's, it's a little more limiting, the way it is, because it puts in times for how many times we give extension, and see, in economic conditions, it gives the opportunity to extend the time only once. And knowing the existing economic conditions, we have seen developments coming back more than once, more than, and not just for one year, several times for a couple of years, and so that's a consideration for the Board, that considering the economy, may want to give extensions more than once, may want to give extensions more than for one year, several years, and so the new policy would give more flexibility in that regard to the Board, and it would be always a decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the decision by the Board.
I guess my question would be, how can it give more flexibility if you're putting timelines in? Right now, we have the flexibility to extend something indefinitely, as long as we're on the Board, we can continue to extend. Now you're putting timelines in here where now we have to pick and choose winners, where we go, well, we're giving this person an extension and not that person, they extended their time limits up, we can't do it.
But the new policy doesn't give timelines, the new policy says sell a reasonable time. The old policy was for one year every time, and then how many times can be renewed, that's kind of governed by the old policy. The new policy just says, Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board could establish a reasonable time. But it's, it's an option, Supervisor Johnson, that you can consider keeping the old one, have a new one, or don't have anything.
We have another question from Supervisor Brotherton.
Okay. I have never known, I have never been involved in a project. I don't care how it was zoned, or what the zoning was, and if my project matched that zoning, that I didn't have to bring in plans and what our intention was to build it there. So it's not just, you can build anything there if it meets that zoning. I've never, I've never had that experience in the thirty years of real estate, that I was in real estate. I have had this experience. I have had things zoned commercial that should be commercial, and maybe something happened, just like the economy has happened here, and the contractor, the developer couldn't go through with it. But another developer would have come in and done that had they not had to go through all of the zoning process again, and again, paying and all of the fees, et cetera. Had that zoning been in place, you might have been able to turn that property over, sell it to another developer very easily, and have that developed. I think in the times where our economy is not that strong, it's just an added burden. And I have only been on the Board six months, and we've done lots and lots and lots of reversions, lots of them. And so I just, I think it's, I think it's confusing. I know it's confusing to the real estate department out there. It's zoned one thing one day, and then the next time, it's something else. So I just think that there's a lot of work going into this that is duplicated.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Moss.
I'm going to give an example that I was involved in as a, as a, just as a citizen, about, I think it was roughly ten years ago, when times were booming, some developer found an area of Bullhead City that was actually allowed a topless bar, a bar that the ladies were half naked, but you could sell liquor. There was one spot, one they found because of the way the zoning code was written, one tiny little few-acre spot that that would be allowed in. And when that was, the permits were submitted to the city to allow this happen, of course, the city council was in an uproar and didn't want it, and refused to give it, and then they got sued because if someone's property is zoned that way, you have to let them put the building in that they want to put in for that particular use. And then, and then the city says, got clever and said, okay, well, now we're not going to give you a liquor permit because we think it's dangerous, and they got sued again, and they lost. Now eventually, the bar didn't go in because the economy tanked, but it, there's, once you zone it, it's coming, and whether you want it or not, whether we want it or not. We can't say we're not, we're denying you a liquor permit, or we're denying you a building permit. If it's zoned, it's zoned, and I think that's what the whole bait and switch in. I'm coming in to put in IBM, and by the way, under permissible uses, it says something we don't necessarily like, and then I give it to my brother, and we no longer have IBM, we have something else. I mean, that, it's happened. If the zoning happens, it's there. And I like the flexibility that the policy that the Planning and Zoning Commission has put together. I like the old system. I think this new system does take into account some of Mr. Hollingsworth's concerns, in that the zoning can be permanent, if it's compatible with the neighborhood, so, which is perfectly fine. But if the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending something that's not compatible because of the greater economic or greater social benefit of the county, and the Board accepts that, I think we, as a Board, want to actually realize that greater economic or social benefit, as opposed to find out that we, we're going to have IBM, but now we're having something completely different.
You can always eliminate those undesirable things at the time of zoning.
Thank you. Any further questions for Ms. Ballard?
The only question would be of Supervisor Moss, and not sure if it's a hypothetical, but can you give the address that you're referring to?
It's, I don't believe it's in existence, but it's, and I do believe someone said it was, it failed. I think that another business group went in there and bought it because they have no intention of ever using it. They do, but I think it's in my neck of the woods, but that's another problem entirely.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt, Ms. Ballard. Anyone else wishing to speak to item number forty-three? Close the public hearing, item number forty-three. Chair would entertain a direction.
I move that we adopt Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2013-103, Approval of a Board of Supervisor Policy for the Implementation of a Schedule for Development per ARS Section 11-814.I for Changes in Zoning District Rezones.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second by Supervisor Angus? Any further questions? There being no further questions, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Item number forty-four. Open the public hearing, discussion possible action, approve the placement of a lien on a dangerous building abatement in the amount of $5,952.60 in accordance with Section 110 of the International Property Code, Maintenance Code, Assessals Parcel Number 306-09-034A. That's at 625 South Bacoby Road, Golden Valley, Arizona. The owner of record is the heirs and device of Robert E. Nolan. Anyone wishing to speak to item number forty-four? No one wishing to speak to item number forty-four? We'll close the public hearing, and... Motion approved. We have a motion for approval?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Moss. Questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number forty-five. Open the public hearing, discussion possible action, approve the placement of a lien for dangerous building abatement in the amount of $3,823.82 in accordance with Section 110 of the International Property Code, Maintenance Code, Assessors Parcel Number 22... 2226-03-157A. That is located at 5677 South Pasadena. South Pasadena Road, Fort Mojave, Arizona. The owner of record is Samuel J. and Janice E. Saldano. Anyone wishing to speak to that item? Close the public hearing, and Chair would entertain a motion for a direction.
Motion approved.
Motion for approval?
Second.
And a second by Supervisor Angus. Questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 46, and that's opening the public hearing, discussion, possible action. Approve the placement of a lien for a dangerous building abatement in the amount of $4,299.54 in accordance with Section 110 of the International Property Maintenance Code, Assesses Parcel Number 2, I'm sorry, 329-05-045, located at 8,406 West El Segundo Drive, Dolan Springs, Arizona. The owner of record is George P. and Candace Miller. Anyone wishing to speak to item number 46? Anyone wishing to speak to item number 46? There being no one, close the public hearing.
Motion approved.
We have a motion for approval?
Second.
And a second by Supervisor Angus. Questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 47. Open the public hearing, discussion, possible action. Approve the changes to the fee schedule as proposed by the Parks Department to be effective October 1st, 2013. Do we have anyone wishing to speak to item number 47? Yes, we do. Herbertis Schroeder.
Good morning.
If you please state your name and address.
My name is Herbertis Schroeder, and I live at 1901 East Danny Devine. And I wanted to bring some things to your attention before you adopt a fee schedule. If you can adopt a fee schedule that, number one, is different for residents and non-residents, that would be an option. Also, I wanted to address Davis Camp down in Bullhead City. A lot of times, I've been down there photographing wildlife, and I have a yearly pass that allows me to go in Walpiede Mountains and Davis Camp. And I'm there before anybody in the park is there, as far as park rangers or anything. And there are people coming in to fish, and they're not paying their fees. And in the evening, sometimes after the park office is closed, there are people coming into camp, they're not paying fees, there's no one to check on that. And they're missing a great opportunity for funding. Because it's an accessible area, and it's so widely accessible, you need to have someone there almost 24/7 to catch those people that are going in after or before the office opens. And that's probably two-thirds of revenue that you could increase it by if you just have someone collecting, even if you have somebody going around every day checking for fees. And, you know, as far as concert venues, Davis is a really great area for concert venues. Mahavie, Walpiede Park is not my idea, a place you would want to do a lot of concert venues or anything. And the more stuff you put up in Walpiede Mountain Park, the less of the rural atmosphere that you have up there. It's almost like a suburb now because there's so many cabins and rentals and so forth. And it's great income for the county. But we need to look at getting revenue equally. They do a really good job up there of getting the cabins rented before they leave. So people are paying their fees, but down at Davis Camp, it's not the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schroeder.
May I ask a question for Mr. Chairman?
Certainly. Moss?
Ma'am, I may have misunderstood, but did you say earlier that you thought we should charge residents and non-residents different fees? Because that's what is being done.
Okay. I haven't read the background on it, but that was a thought of a revenue source. But my main concern is the fact that you're not getting all the fee potential that you could get out of Davis Camp.
My next question for you is, do you oppose a $10 increase in your annual fee to use the camp?
Yes and no. Economic times being what they are, it's, it's, believe it or not, it's going to be hard for me to come up for that extra $10. Because, you know, I spend gas going down to Davis Camp, you know, I spend gas money going up to Walpiede Mountain. And, yeah, I kind of, there's a lot of people that wouldn't be able to afford that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 47? Close the public hearing, item number 47. Chair would entertain a direction.
I move to discuss item 47.
Motion for discussion?
Yeah. Yes.
I'll think of the motion for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
If, may I direct this to Mr. Lutowski or Mr. Hendricks, whoever's a better choice? Is it possible that we could just change the fee for the non-residents, but leave it the same for our residents, and still can deal with the issue that the county has when it comes to the shortfall in revenue?
Mr. Chairman, if I could have our Public Works Director work with the Parks Department in placing these fees together, and I'd like to have him respond to that question. Thank you.
Mr. Lutowski?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Supervisor Moss, the proposed day use and annual pass fees are proposed for increase, the first proposed increase since January 2005. The annual pass fees for residents will remain $20 less than the fees for the out-of-state or non-residents of Mojave County. However, they are proposed, both resident and non-resident annual pass fees, both proposed to be increased $10. The board, at their discretion in considering the proposed user fees, may establish a, an alternate fee for the resident annual pass holders. Which I also should point out as well, when Mojave County Parks sells annual passes, we do discount those annual passes by 50% for the second half of the year, whenever we sell passes past July 1st. So we're actually at a point right now where if you were a resident, purchasing an annual pass, that cost of that pass would be discounted 50% because that pass, of course, is only valid for the rest of this calendar year. So it is the board's discretion to hold the annual pass fees for residents at the current $40 rate. We're proposing to increase it to 50, but that would be the board's discretion.
Thank you, Mr. Lutowski.
The reason I raise that question, Mr. Chairman, is this last Monday, I attended an Arizona Corporation Commission hearing because Hildy Angus, Supervisor Angus, made me on behalf of Mojave Electric Cooperative, because there's an electric cooperative in my area and her area, which is actually attempting to reduce the rate to its users. They want to decrease the amount they're charging. And lo and behold, the Arizona Corporation Commission's consultants are opposing that decrease in rate. So apparently, in their theory, rates only go one direction up. And when I went down there to argue on behalf of my constituents and Hildy's constituents, I think I made the factually accurate statement that for a lot of people in our county, a $2 or $3 per month savings on their electric bill is a really big deal. And now so for a lot of people in our county. And we are looking at the CBGB backup material, we're a much poorer county than average. When it comes, we're now going to increase the cost of an annual pass to a resident by $10, which is, doesn't sound all that great, but that's actually a 25% increase in the cost. When it occurs to me, we could solve the same problem by increasing the annual pass to a non-resident, or a daily pass to the non-residents by the difference. In other words, increase the non-resident pass by $20. And the people traveling into Mojave County to enjoy our beaches, I think, would probably be more financially affluent than a lot of the grandfathers who want to take their grandsons out fishing on the Colorado River. So that's just a thought that has occurred to me, and I would personally prefer that we keep the level the same for our residents, and if we have to make up the difference, do that by tapping into our tourist space, essentially.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Lutowski.
I have a question for him.
Supervisor Johnson?
How far on the whole are your Parks Department right now?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I would like to point out that for the five-year period fiscal year 2008 through 2012, Mojave County Parks has incurred revenues to expenses. As you all well know, the Parks Department is fully supported by its Parks user fees, but the revenues to expenses were within $30,000. And then this, just this past fiscal year 13, while period 13 has yet to close, for the full 12-month period, we have shown that revenues have exceeded our expenditures by approximately $52,000. So a real credit to our Parks Administrator, Sean Blackburn, and his park rangers, Joe Donovan at Walpiede Mountain Park, and Ron Weaver at Davis Camp. However, the, the real important thing to consider would be, the fee increases would generate additional revenue to support Mojave County Parks's continued implementation of our Walpiede Mountain Park and Davis Camp regional plans, to enable us to pursue continued preventive maintenance of our lodging facilities, as well as investment into additional revenue generating facilities. And a good example of that would be our 20-plus space RV park that was recently constructed at Walpiede Mountain Park, very well received by the RV community, and a real successful demonstration of Parks using not only grant funds, but also its own investment through matching funds to enable an additional revenue generating facility such as that.
I guess you kind of answered it, but how much money will you generate so you can, you know, do the improvements and stuff with this? What do you project your total amount is going to be above your expenses? Or do we have to come back in two years and redo the schedule or not?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, by our estimates, we anticipate the collective fee increases to generate approximately $198,000 annually.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Supervisor Angus?
I noticed that the vacation homes, the proposed rate is significantly less than in the past. Can you explain why that is so?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, that is a very good point. The vacation homes at Davis Camp are proposed for a decrease of about $40 per night, per unit, from a range of $105 to $145, decreased to a range of $65 to $105. And quite frankly, this is due to the tremendous competition that Davis Camp has with Laughlin, and the lodging options that tourists have in the Laughlin vicinity. Quite frankly, as much as we promote these very well-received units for multiple occupancy, I mean, gosh, you could house four, six persons per vacation home, we just can't compete with the costs that are being offered in the Laughlin area, where tourists might just elect to rent, you know, two or three hotel rooms at the same cost. So we think this places us in a more competitive position to market our vacation homes.
Is that what you've heard? Is that the reason that you've heard, or could it be anything else? How are, I haven't been there, so I don't know the conditions of the cabins. Are they updated, or do they need to be updated?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, these are vacation homes that date back to when Davis Camp, Camp, Davis Dam was constructed, housing the Davis Dam workers. We have rigorously worked to upgrade, in fact, expand some of the amenities at these vacation homes. In fact, the Bureau of Federal Grant was recently obtained, and Mojave County Parks did improvements to these vacation homes to ensure that they are up to date. What we're hearing from our customers is a couple of things. One is the rates, and two, just our occupancy levels. Our occupancy levels, our rentals at these vacation homes, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I do recall them to be about 25 to 30% occupancy over the course of a year. And we hope to be able to do better on that by potentially providing attractive rental rates.
When they rent these cabins, do they also have to pay the day rates? Or is it included in the, you know, the fees? Is it...
Supervisor Angus, it is actually included in the lodging rate.
If I have one more question, Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Moss?
If we were to decline to increase the rate for a resident, but shift that cost to the non-residents, would that still allow your department to make these improvements at Davis Camp and in the Walpides that you want to make in order to further the amenities in those facilities?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, in the backup that Parks has presented, we do estimate the revenue increase attributed to just the fee increases to be about $34,000. We did not break it down into how much revenue would be generated by the day use, just a single day, from $5 to $7, versus that target fee that Use Supervisor Moss were targeting, the resident annual pass increase of $10. I would suspect that that would probably be a nominal impact to the overall $34,000 that we're anticipating to bring in for the single-day entrance, as well as the annual pass sales for residents and non-residents.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Hendricks?
When, as stated in the evaluation of the fees for the residents, you know, on all these fees, there's always a law of diminishing returns if we raise the fees too drastically. You get less usage. And I think what Mr. Lutowski is proposing took that into consideration. One of the things that we have to be very careful with if we're trying to make up the difference between lowering the residence fees and raising the, raising the non-residents' fees, we've got to make sure that that won't cause an underutilization and decrease our overall revenues just by raising those fees.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, would it be better if we let the, Mr. Lutowski and Mr. Hepler and the various departments involved look at that issue before we vote on it? Or would you just prefer us to vote on it now and take what you can get when it comes to increased fees?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, one of, what I would suggest is if we did want to try to do something for our residents, possibly take a look at leaving the residence fees alone, and not trying to make up the difference with the non-residents' fees, and leave them as proposed by Mr. Lutowski.
So basically, don't double up on the non-residents, just leave the $10 increase on the non-residents, but don't approve the increase in the residential fees?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, that would be what I would recommend. If next year we find that we believe we have enough cushion or the capabilities to raise the non-residents' fees to make up that difference, we could propose that again next year.
Any further questions for?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would have would be that we had OMB, you guys did a study on this, to come up with your fees, and if we're going to, just thinking about changing it, maybe we ought to have a, you know, delay this 30 days, whatever, whatever length of time to have OMB come back, and along with Parks, to see what the difference would be, if there's any, because we are to, we're on the losing end of the money right now, so we don't want to put something in place that continues that losing end. And that'd be my only suggestion.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. My only concern is the increase is not that significant. You're talking about $10, and you're looking at venues in which, that are totally so enjoyable, I just can't see that the rising from, from $40 to $50 for an annual pass is going to be significant to the people that are using it. And we haven't changed these fees since 2005. That's a, that's a very long span of time in order not to change the fees, to adjust to the current changes and inflation and replacement. And I think we've done an excellent job in providing information on this, and you come to a point in time where we know that you're very hesitant to have price increase, but there's also a point in time, you either have a price increase, or you start shutting the doors. So I think we ought to take that into consideration. We haven't changed the fees since '05. I believe that's correct. Is it '05?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
If you were to go back and put a percentage to the number of years that has not been changed, you're looking at a less than 7% per year change.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, because I want to make sure if I clarify two points. One, I'll give credit to Supervisor Brotherton for this observation, not myself, but in 2005, the economy was really good, and it's not good now. So when it comes to discretionary income, I think there may have been more of it than there is now. But when it comes to the, next point, I thought I heard Mr. Lutowski's comments were that when it comes to a revenue stream, we're actually positive, but we're just not positive enough to make the improvements to the parks that we want to make. So it's not an issue of shutting doors, it's an issue of how much and how soon of improvements do we make to the park. That's really the issue. Am I correct about that, Mr. Lutowski?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, to characterize it best, it's about, the increase is about funding our ongoing preventive maintenance of our existing assets, as well as allowing us to invest into additional improvements and expansions that allow us to grow our revenue for.
So it's a combination?
It's a combination of preserving existing assets and investing in the new assets.
Okay. I mean, I think maybe, because at your point, I think Mr. Chairman Watson is very well-taken, and I think Supervisor Johnson actually had the answer. Maybe if we analyzed the data, we would know which way to jump on it. So is it a problem if we tabled this for, to the next month's meeting?
I don't see it.
Staff is proposing implementation on October 1st, so we still have ample time.
Change the implementation. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if we do delay this process, because we have to have the public hearing process, and then there's a 16-day implementation period after, once the board approves it, it will put us quite a ways down the road.
So then, maybe approving it without the resident increase would at least get the process started financially, and then we can have staff come back to us later and to do, whether it's in December or whenever, to talk about the non, or excuse me, the resident increase and how that affected things.
Very good point.
Mr. Chairman, all good.
You know, I honestly, I don't really see the resident increase as being, I live right next to Davis Camp, and I see, and I don't, I don't see it as being something that people really aren't going to do. It is a big asset to our community and Bullhead City, frankly, as well. And I, every time they do upgrades, like we had the Ramones, we get more people in. So I see it as something, you know, a necessary evil to keep, to keep it maintained and growing and an asset to our community. So I'm for the increases. I don't think they're outrageous.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Angus. Did you have another comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I guess if we do have this brought back to us, I would like to have the issue that was brought up by the speaker about not having security in our facilities 24 hours a day, because those are, you know, we're spending an awful lot of money, and I was always under the impression that we had armed guards there, not only to protect our property, but to protect the people who were staying there. So I'd like some update on that.
Okay, we're still in the open, we're still in the open public hearing mode. Anyone else wishing to address item number 47? Okay, we'll close the open public hearing then for item number 47, and Chair will look for direction.
I would like to approve the changes to the fee, move that we approve the changes to the fee schedule as proposed by the Parks Department to be effective October 1st, 2013, with the exception of the resident increases.
Do we have a motion? And I'll second that motion. Discussion?
I would like to comment that we did have one speaker from the community come out today, and she did say that that $10 increase would have impacted her. So it's, many people, it would not impact, but it would impact some.
Okay. There being no further discussion of?
I'm just, I'm confused. So we're voting on approving it without the resident, and then are we going to come back, or is it just, that's it, just without the resident increase?
Well, if we, if we approve it without the resident increase, then staff could come back to us later when they analyze the differences between the two and how positive or adverse of effect it could be. That would be up to staff to come back to us on that, I think.
Can you, can you split it up like that?
Would you care to amend your motion then to further explain that possibility to staff?
I amend my motion, move to amend my motion, to approve the changes to the fee schedule as proposed by the Parks Department to be effective October 1st, 2013, with the exception of the resident increases, and further direct staff to come to us upon completion of their evaluation as to the impact of not increasing the resident fees.
And I'll second the amended motion. Questions? There being no further questions, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. Motion is carried. Item number 48. Open the public hearing, discussion for the fiscal year 2013, '14 Mojave County tax levies and rates, and adoption of the rate schedule for August 19th, 2013. We have one person signed up to speak to that item. Mr. Robinson, would you care to speak to this item?
Chairman Watson, supervisors and staff, I'm Steve Robinson. Address hasn't changed. I have been watching the budget for years, for the last year and a half. I'm opposing the increase in rates on, or the, continuing the rate on the TV district when the proposed budget is about $600,000 to $700,000, and there sits in the reserve account 2.5, almost 2.5 million. When Mr. Trahan spoke before the board on the 15th, he stated that there would be no necessary capital improvements over the next five years. And when you have a sweep out of that fund of $6 million, over $6 million last year, that tells the public that you've been having a too high of a rate for far too long to have generated over about 10 years' worth of cost of operations that you just took right out of that fund. When you read the statutes, 481104, it states right in there that you shall take into account previous year's deficits or surpluses. And if you had a deficit, then you would raise the rate to cover the shortfall from the previous year. And when you have a surplus, and we still have a surplus in the account of 2.5 million, I think it would be wise and prudent to respect the needs of the taxpayers to reduce that rate. You could reduce it to zero effectively, or at least reduce it down to the, from the $1.5 million down to the $750,000. You could cut the rate in half and help the taxpayers even, albeit a little bit. I know next meeting, there's going to be a meeting where they come back and discuss the issue of the cost of that new contract. So that's one issue. The other issue is, I noticed that the Library Fund District in 2000, their cost of operations was $2 million. This past year, it was nearly triple that, at over $5.5 million. I don't think we've increased the number of libraries over that time period. There are still the three main libraries and the number of the community libraries. So I'm thinking something needs to be reviewed as far as our operations, and there's over $9 million in that fund, $8.5 million, which is more than 100% of last year's operations. So I suggest you look at those two and take a look at reducing those rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 47? Anyone wishing to speak to item number 47?
47? It's 48.
I'm sorry, 48. Okay, we'll close the public hearing on item number 48, then move to item 49. Open the public hearing, discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2013-080, adoption of the Mojave County budget for fiscal year 2013 and '14, and the amounts recommended by staff, with the general fund budget approved as a modified lump sum of budget. And we have one person signed up to speak to that item. Mr. Robinson? Item 48. And we will, 49.
There's a couple, three issues in this budget that had me troubled. First off, on Schedule A, it shows the fund balance for the general fund at about $1.87 million. However, the Treasurer's report effective June 30th showed the combined general funds, three different funds, have a total asset net balance of 13 and 1/4, 13 and 1/2 million. So I'm wondering if I could get an explanation why the Treasurer's report shows up June 30th, 13 and 1/2 million, yet you're only showing 1.87 million.
Mr. Chairman, Schedule A represents the budget, not the balance sheet. The budget is the amount of the fund balance that we are asking the board to budget to be available for use in FY14. The total general fund surplus will be in excess of 13 or 14 million, depending on where this year closes. We are only asking the board to authorize budgeting to expand 1.8.
So in other words, that doesn't reflect the full balance of that account?
No, it doesn't. It is not intended to.
Okay, well, when it says the balance at the end of June 30th or beginning July 1st, I didn't, I, well, 10, back in 2008, it showed a fund balance of 11 million at that same time, and the financial report, the annual report that you produce, shows that it was the same amount. And there was a House bill that was passed this past year, a year ago, called House Bill 2621, where it required the county to show both unrestricted and restricted unencumbered funds in the balance sheet, or in the, not in the balance sheet, but in the budget, in the whole budget process. They required it not only of all cities, towns and counties, it also required it for Mojave, for the Community College District, so that it showed all reserved funds or unreserved or unrestricted funds in that balance sheet. And that's all I'm asking is, where is that money showing? The other issue that I saw was that there are a number of funds where it shows a carry forward or a contingency from the prior years, several different funds that it shows that, and that's legitimate, but it does not show that as assets or income, because when you carry the money over from the previous year, it should also show up as an, as income for the upcoming year. And there was like, you know, several different funds where it showed like $2 to $3 million available fund balance, and according to that new state law, they're supposed to show that as revenues for the current year, and not just as an expense. There are several funds, like for instance, the Fleet Services Fund has a budget of one point, has expenditures of $1.9 million last year, yet it has a carry forward of $1.5 million, or 75% for its reserves. And I guess I'm just seeing so much money being placed in funds, or being left in funds that's not being reported to the community.
I'm not sure what the question is, sir.
I'm not sure either, but if you'd like to respond?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have in the 12 years of my service to Mojave County planned and budgeted in accordance with state law. We've been audited each of those years and have not found to be in violation of any of those laws. And I would further point out that Mojave County, as all other counties, are subject to an expenditure limitation that allows our total expenditures, total for the whole county, to grow a certain percent each year. And about three years ago, we were spending very close to that expenditure limit, but we were also budgeting the entire surpluses in all of our funds. And so we asked places like the Flood Control and the Road Department and others to budget only the portion of their contingency of their fund balance that they thought they might actually need during the next fiscal year. This allowed us to budget a lower number in proportion of what we actually expected to use and kept us under the expenditure limit. We've been doing that ever since, and we've been doing it in the general fund as well. I hope that answers it. As far as where the totals of all our surpluses are, that's found in the balance sheet where it belongs, which is a report that comes out annually after the close of the year, and typically, because of the audit procedures that we go through, we close our year June 30th. We have full transactions for another month of July for period 13, and then we have auditors in for four or five months, making sure that we've got everything recorded properly, and then they issue our statements generally in February or March, that they're issued by the Auditor General's office. And so if you wanted to look to last year's balance sheet and annual financial report, all that information is there.
Thank you, Ms. Timko.
May I just respond with this quote from ARS 4217151, subsection A, paragraph 1, and this is the section about levying, not about filing an annual report, but it's about levying the taxes. And it says, "On or before the third Monday in August each year, the governing body of each county, city, town, community, college district, or school district shall, one, fix levy assessed the amount to be raised from property taxation and secondary property taxation. This amount plus all other sources of revenue as estimated and restricted and unrestricted unencumbered balances shall, from the preceding year, shall equal the total amounts proposed to be spent in the budget for the current fiscal year." And so my question is, if you don't show those amounts unrestricted, then it doesn't show?
Then they are not proposed to be spent. You just read it yourself, the amounts proposed to be spent, that's what's in our budget.
And it doesn't show in their budget?
Because we don't propose to spend it. We're only required to show on the budget what we propose to spend. Read the statute again.
I understand what you're saying. I just see every other county showing the available fund balance regardless of whether it's restricted or unrestricted, and we just, we don't do it in our county.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Point of clarification, if I could, on item number 48, the public hearing. Point of clarification, if I could, on item number forty-eight, the public hearing on the tax levies and rates, and that, I just want to make sure that's for the adoption of rates scheduled for August 19th. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, you're absolutely correct. No action is needed. This is just a public hearing that's required by statute. And in fact, this is the... when you take action on this item in August the 16th meeting, this will be your direction to the county treasurer to use these rates for the purposes of the next tax bill.
Okay, thank you.
The rates that are included here from Mojave County, we had a previous public hearing on and adoption at a meeting in May or June.
Right. Okay. Just wanted to make absolutely positive, I was right on the money there. Okay. All right. Item number forty-nine. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in the public hearing on item number forty-nine? Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Excuse me. Supervisor Johnson, the letter that you gave me, where... Wendy, you want me to read it?
Oh, yeah. They had an email sent to me with a statement. Would the clerk like to read it in?
Okay.
This is from Marcella C. Lair at 3931 Winnebago Drive, Lake Havasu City, Arizona, to the honorable members of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors. We are all in this boat of economic rebuilding together. The difference between our employees in the county and the employees of our business community is that the county employees actually enjoy a more stable status from a business standpoint. Their doors are not on the verge of closing in a couple of days, a few weeks, or in six months. The county employees get medical insurance and are able to save for retirement. Their paychecks come on time. Presently, mom-and-pop businesses don't have that stability. In mom-and-pop businesses, employees have actually taken a pay cut, waited a few days for their paycheck, and took responsibility with the owners to make the business work and become profitable. With the example of work ethic in front of the county, it means that passing a raise would signal a status of superiority that is inappropriate at this time and an unfair burden on the shoulders of people who have been working awfully hard to keep it together financially, not to mention that they have to work a little harder for their counterparts to enjoy a raise that they haven't received in order for the county worker to enjoy their raise. It means less money goes home to feed the family of the non-county worker. The approval could also create a chasm where a wedge once existed when it comes to the public's perception of unnecessary excess in our local government, that the board has been actively battling through their wise actions in reducing government and being careful with county expenditures. The board needs to set the tone to unify our community. Unity naturally includes a compassion and understanding of those around us. It means we don't take unfair advantage because we have the power. It also means that we are alert to the incipient belief of entitlement that can creep in and make us feel that we can do this to others because we have gone without ourselves. We need to put people in Mojave County back to work. The county is too in the business of servicing its taxpayers, not being serviced by the taxpayers. Who is the actual boss in this scenario? It's our taxpayers. It seems that it would be most prudent to continue growing Mojave County and put ourselves aside at this time. The county employees are civil servants, not civil masters. Let the county's actions reflect the gratitude that they should have for their jobs and service to this fine county. Let the county prove itself through our, its, and not approve this raise. However, at the same time, a motion should be entertained to table this discussion of a raise exactly one year hence and see the progress that has been made. The county employees certainly deserve a reward for what they do, but they shouldn't do it while penalizing the citizens of this county by making their lives a bit more difficult to survive financially. Again, we are all in this boat together. Let's row as one team. Respectfully, Marcella C. Lair.
Thank you, Ms. Prince.
Mr. Chairman, if I might address one aspect of the budget that's before you for approval, and that is the revenue side, the amount that we collect from the citizens of Mojave County to operate the county government. I put together an analysis comparing the four taxes that the county charges, the general fund primary levy, the TV district levy, the library district levy, and the flood control district levy, and comparing what we're asking you to approve in this budget from those four sources this fiscal year is $48,414,000. If you go back to FY11, which wasn't really a great year for us, the boom hit in 2008, and we had been suffering ever since, the revenue we collected in FY11 was $56,652,000. Eight million, 238,000 more in FY11 than we're currently collecting. We're currently collecting at a rate 14 and 1/2% below what we are collecting in FY11. This is in a state that has an allowance of 2% per year of increase in the property tax without even having to go into the newspaper. And so we have during that same period of time decreased by 14.54% over each of those three years, almost 5% a year decrease instead of a 2% increase. So I think we're doing as best we can to hold down the costs to the county taxpayers. I and my staff and everyone sitting at this table are county taxpayers, and we all take that into account when we recommend the budget. We also have certain statutory duties that were required to perform, and unfortunately, those duties aren't necessarily exempt from inflation and the costs that we have to pay in performing them. We also have a very real issue when it comes to employment. Mojave County is one of the largest employers in the county, and what we do affects the economic activity in the county. However, that being said, we have to acquire and attain employees who have the ability not only to perform the duties of the county, but also to improve the service levels that we can give to our taxpayers. I feel we've done a great job since FY11, improving services to our taxpayers and doing it by asking for 5% less each of those three years. We have been five years since our employees have received a pay increase. If you expect to attract and retain the quality of employees that allow that to happen, you need to pay a fair salary. And that's why staff has recommended the 2 and 1/2% increase according to the terms that we discussed at the workshop to be part of this budget. It's included in this budget, and even including it in this budget allows us to continue that 5% per year decrease that we've been doing since FY11. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Timko.
Mr. Chairman, I guess nobody else is going to talk?
I was just going to check. Anyone else wishing to discuss item number forty-nine during the open public hearing portion?
Oh, okay.
At this point, we'll close the public hearing and look for a direction.
I move to discuss item forty-nine of the agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second for discussion. Item number forty-nine. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Moss.
I have a... I will reiterate that I think I diverge from Ms. Lair to a degree, and only to a degree, not completely, because if Mr. Timko and Mr. Hendricks say there is room in the budget to give a 2 and 1/2% increase to the employees this year, I believe them. I have faith and I trust their abilities. Where I agree with Ms. Lair is I've been a member of the Board of Supervisors now for roughly six months, seven months, and I'm very hesitant to increase a category of expense by 2 and 1/2% on a permanent basis forever, which is... last time I looked at the budget, it was what, 54% was payroll and then wages, something like that? So over half of the county budget, increasing it by 2 and 1/2% forever, when I would really like to have time in order to evaluate as a permanent matter whether the believed savings and it's what Mr. Timko has described to me is perfectly rational, perfectly correct. I believe that all the things that he says will come to fruition will come to fruition without... with the exception of perhaps a dollar crashing, something along those lines. On the other hand, I think it sends, from my personal perspective, something of a bad message in that my grandfather immigrated to... one of my grandfathers immigrated from Arizona to Missouri, and even though you believe something, wait till you see it before you act on it, is my personal philosophy. So I would prefer to give the employees a one-time lump sum payment of 2 and 1/2%, whether the check could be cut tomorrow or next month, it doesn't matter, but it's a one-time payment so the county is not locked in. And the next year, we can do what Ms. Lair suggests and evaluate a permanent increase. That's my first comment. The second comment is, I was looking through the materials and reading things, and I had a... I saw, and if I missed it earlier at earlier meetings, I apologize, but there was a proposed pay increase of the human resources director and procurement director because of the... some reclassification that's going on. And then low and behold, I'm reading it, and I'm thinking, wow, I think I must have missed it at the last meeting. And I get an email from one of my constituents ranting about it at the same time, and I say, well, this, I got to ask the question now, because it's kind of... was that tendered to us in the tentative budget for the HR director and the procurement director?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, no, it was not. That was overlooked by my... by myself. Along with the direction with the restructuring, with the removal of the deputy county managers and making all department heads direct reports to the county administrator, at that time, we determined that a fair allocation was that all department heads should be at pay grade 29. These two people were overlooked in preparing the budget in that regard.
And if I could, my reading of the... there was a letter of explanation in there, I think it was a July 16th letter, and it said, I believe that this is being funded to some degree by the lottery monies that we got in this... and I mean, it looked like it came under that subcategory.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, in my transmittal memo dated July 24th, when I transmitted this final budget to you, I detailed every single thing that had changed since our workshop, and the tentative budget had been approved. They were lumped together, but they weren't necessarily contingent upon each other.
Okay, because this is my point, is as Mr... as Craig Stevens, you see the guy from CSA? Was that his... is that his name?
Craig Sullivan.
Craig Sullivan.
Sullivan, excuse me. Was talking about the supervisors engaging with our state legislatures to get our lottery money and what a great job we did. That prompted me to pat myself on the back mentally, because I had engaged with our state legislatures, I'm sure we all had, about that lottery money. And I was vehement, and I was vocal, and I begged, and I threatened, and I pleaded, and I did everything we could, as we all did, to get that money restored. And none of the reasons I gave our state legislatures as to why we needed that money involved giving procurement directors and HR directors an increase in pay. It all involved... it involved Lake Mojave Ranch's fire department loans that we've been forced to extend. It involved more law enforcement in the strip area, which we have to do. It involved those sort of things. And I understand that the H... am I correct in assuming the H director and the procurement director will be getting this increase in pay plus the 2 and 1/2% increase? Is that incorrect or correct?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, two things I would correct on. The first is that at the time you adopted the tentative budget, we were aware at that point in time that the $550,000 revenue from the lottery was in fact going to be coming to us. And at that time, the board, when they adopted the tentative budget, directed staff to split that $550,000 to go $458,852 to increase the outside council budget for indigent defense, and the balance of $91,148 was to go to the jail healthcare contract, and that's exactly what happened.
Okay.
So that lottery money did not in any way fund these reclassifications. The second thing I would point out is that per our discussion at the workshop, no one is to receive two raises. If someone is being reclassified in this year's budget, they will either be reclassified or get the 2 and 1/2%, whichever is greater for them, but they will not get both.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Timko, and it does... I do appreciate that.
Okay, I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
But this is what... how much is the HR director's raise going to be? What is the number?
I think the amount is less than $5,000.
And the procurement director's raise?
The procurement director's quite a bit more because she was quite a bit lower than the... I've got it, hold on one second.
And, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, if I may, one thing, it also includes the library director's range. What we looked at is simply that our lowest directors, all with the exception of those three, are at a 29. So it was my intent to bring all directors at... up to a 29. In accordance with our employee rules, if somebody changes ranges from one to three ranges, they're eligible for either a 5% salary increase or bottom of that range, whichever is greater. If you go four to six range change, that employee is eligible for a 10% salary increase or bottom of the range that they are placed into, whichever is greater. In Annie's last... Pruer's case, her range change was considerable. I think she was originally at a...
Twenty-four.
At a 24, and she's going to a 29.
The specific amounts that you asked for, sir, the HR director's increase, including fringe benefits, $5,605 for the procurement director, $15,048.
Can I say something? Are you done? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm done for the moment. I got to collect my thoughts and let it settle.
You know, I understand procurement manager to director, that I get, but it just seems so arbitrary that, you know... and I think you used the word discretionary. And so I think that as a county, as a board, we really need to set some policies here because I don't understand it. It looks very arbitrary, and, you know, we have directors making all over the ranges here, and I think that that's a problem. And I don't understand why we're sitting here today in 2000, and we don't have a policy. It seems some of this is by statute. As Supervisor Johnson has talked about before, that, you know, we have... we open ourselves up to some liability issues if we don't, you know, do things absolutely correctly. And I just have a problem with two... these two being taken out and being put in at the last minute. And then I've been sort of told, and I don't know if this is correct, that we are doing a whole reclassification of all our sort of employees at certain levels. Is that true?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, on a couple of those points, and you've made several. First is that when the reorganization eliminating the deputy county managers occurred and all department heads reported directly to the county administrator, we had... we do have rules. We have personnel rules that say that similarly performing employees should be at the same pay level. We chose to wait until the budget time to address that, and there were in fact only three department head direct reports to the county administrator who were not at level 29. Some are in excess of that because of the nature of their position. And previous job studies of their position said that some should be 31s, and some should be 30s, and some should be 29s. But that's all in accordance with our personnel rules and our classification system. So what we're attempting to do here is correct those three situations, the library director, the procurement director, and the human resources director, who are being paid at a level below what all the other department heads were for the sake of equity. And it was done in exact compliance with what our personnel rules say to do in the event of that occurring.
But the reason that we had such a high end of the department heads was because of this unusual thing with the deputy county managers and probably at the time, like Ms. Matherton wanted to at the time, roll back some of the pay because it was artificially heightened because of that, you know, made-up designation of deputy county manager. So, you know, it seems like we are making it up as we go.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, of the four people who were deputy county managers, two of the positions were eliminated altogether. Mine resulted in a pay reduction, and the fourth was voted by the board to keep the same pay. So it's not making it up as we go. It was as the board directed us at that time for those particular salaries. This is correcting the pay inequity between the people who now report to the county administrator, who should all be similarly placed.
But just for clarification, we took that direction from the staff for the salary level, so I'm... that's all. I mean, I didn't come... we didn't come out and say, do this.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Angus, to answer your question... Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Angus, to answer your question, in a classification, you asked the question, are we doing a reclass for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
One of the things that we looked at, you can either hire out a reclass comp study or try to do it internally. We looked at going to a different computer program for HR so that it would free up some of the staff to be able to possibly start taking little bites out of the, of a classification compensation study. And you've got to realize, in a classification compensation study, classification compensation can either go up or down depending on the job audit. So it's my intent, actually, since we haven't had one done in a very long time, to try to do a classification compensation study as quickly as possible across the board. We didn't do it this year, because nothing was approved in the budget, except in certain areas. It's our intent to try to get a classification study on each individual employee as we have the resources to do so.
But what does that really mean? I mean, you said study, but it's not going to be implemented, because we didn't, we didn't take it into consideration in the budget.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, this, the study is a very lengthy process, and will result in a recommendation, which we'll obviously have to come back to the Board for approval and funding.
So just, just for the record, so we decided that it was very important to make the Directors, but, you know, we'll take a study on everybody else.
It was very important to me to get the Directors at the same level, and that's what I'm recommending to the Board. The discretionary aspect that I discussed with you is, if the Board doesn't want to take staff in my recommendation, it's your prerogative not to do so. These are classified employees, or, I'm sorry, these are unclassified employees.
I have a question.
I have? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Supervisor Brotherton.
Okay. I, you know, we have been all over the Board, maybe, for a long time. However, we have to start somewhere. And there has been some reclassifications of the very lowest paid personnel we have, which was in the library, and they have been reclassified. And that is being worked on, but we've got a lot of employees. It can't happen overnight. And I feel very strongly that if we have most of our Directors at a scale, a range, that all of them should be there. I mean, I, sometimes we gag at a gnat and swallow a camel. We really do. I mean, all of this talk about this huge race, 2.5%, after five or seven years, is absolutely practically nothing. And yet, we fight over giving our employees a token to let them know that we do appreciate them, and we've got some of the best that there is here in Mojave County. And I guess I'm just kind of appalled that we fight over this. I think that they would deserve two or three or four times that much, if we could possibly do it, but we can't. So let's start somewhere, and also, it has been a real passion of mine to relieve some of this compression that we have. Someone coming in, hired at way more than somebody else that's been here for 10 or 20 years. We've got to start somewhere. And we are working on it. It's being worked on. The thing of it is, nothing has to come before the Board, except the Directors' pay. So that is logical for us to, I guess, pick on them. But there's a lot of reclassification going on, and people being brought up to the level where they probably should have been for a long, long time, and we, as the Board, just don't really know about it. So I, I guess that's all I've got to say. I just, I think that we should be fair. I don't think personality should enter into it. I think that it should all be done the same for every Director. If they're all at a range 29, then that's where they should all be.
Okay, just, just for the record, I don't think we're fighting about giving the employees raises. All we were debating was the mechanism to get it to them, so I want that clear.
Thank you, Supervisor Angus.
Mr. Chairman?
I have a question to interject, and I'm not sure exactly where. The Department Head for Management and Budget, is, is he one that would qualify for range 29?
No, not a Director.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Watson?
Because he's a Department Head, is that correct? And he's outside of?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Watson, I would, I don't know what we graded that position, but the Board specifically, when they had that position, reported to them, set the pay and the grade for that position, so it would take it out of our purview to make a recommendation.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
His, his pay and pay grade were specifically set by the Board of Supervisors when they said that that position was to report directly to the Board rather than to the County Administrator.
His pay was not cut.
I didn't say it was cut. I said his pay was set.
Oh, I see.
And his pay range was set by the Board when they made them their direct employee. So we would not make a recommendation in that arena.
And my question is, it's, it's probably very simple to you, but it's a little confusing to me. Because he's a Department Head and reports to the Board, he's different than a Director that reports to, to Mr. Hendrix.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Watson, I don't know that there's a distinction. All I know is that for both Mr., the Risk Manager and for the Manager of OMB, the Board specifically set
Set those salaries.
The amount of salaries that those people are to be paid, so we did not include that in our proposal.
Right, okay. It's just, it's my question.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could add a little bit to that, they're a unique, they're in a unique group. They're, I and the, the OMB and Risk Management report to the Board supervised, as does the Clerk. If you wanted to, at some future date, consider them, their title as a Director title, that's certainly the Board's prerogative.
Okay, and I guess that's where my question is trying to evolve from, is although the Board set their salary when they were placed outside of your umbrella, that what would be their avenue, their only avenue then would be to come to the Board and ask for a reclassification or a, a study done on their particular department?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think it said it was already done, wasn't it?
It's done, it's done. But I'm trying to make clear in my mind what the process would be for those folks, because essentially, they report to the Board directly and not to Mr. Hendrix.
Yes, sir, and that, that is the distinction that would separate all four of the people that
That's correct.
That report to the Board directly.
But it makes them very, it would make them very difficult for them then to say, well gee, I'm gonna come to the Board and say I want a raise or reclassification. I would hate to be doing that, because you'd be standing kind of naked.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Watson, if I could, Mike alluded to the classification and compensation study. And, and that is typically a process that looks at every position in the organization. And it compares us not only within the organization, who does what compared in this department, compared to what's done in another department, it also compares us to other employers in the, in the general area, and to other similar employees, i.e. other counties. And so, at that time, all positions are looked at, and that's a way that periodically, and it's been several years since we've done the last one, it gives the Board a, a barometer of where we are as an employer, duty by duty, for what we're paying our employees versus what other employees are paying theirs.
And I understand that, I just wanted clarification on those two.
That would also be a venue that would cover those two positions.
Okay, thank you.
Just for clarification, those two will be included in the raise, just like everybody else. Those two employees will be included in the, in any, any raise that the other employees get.
In the 2.5?
Yes.
But, but not, yes, I understand.
Yeah.
My question was somewhat different, but that's great.
Yeah, and we can, we can hear them, if they want to come to us for a raise, why wouldn't we? The Clerk has always reported directly to the
Certainly.
Board, and that's where she comes.
I understand.
Okay.
I just needed clarification.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, some of the comments, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as I understand the answer to Supervisor Angus's question, there's a reclassification, a widespread reclassification study, which is, is either ongoing or contemplated. Am I right about that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, and the reason I bring that out, or I pull that particular fact out, is I think it lends, lends credence to making the 2.5% a lump sum payment, because we're gonna give them a 2.5% permanent pay increase this year, and then this reclassification study may show that they're due X amount additional dollars next year. And I, I don't want to overcommit in my very first year of office as supposedly a conservative who is basically throwing too much money in a certain direction out of the get-go. I want it to be a calm, deliberate process where I know exactly what's happening all the way down the point, including taking into account reclassification studies. But another point I'd like to bring out, or like to clarify, is the HR Director, is he a, was he a Director before this process? I mean, has he been, he's been a Director for the last year, two, three, four years? Is, am I right or wrong about that?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, I always considered the HR Director, when he reported to a Deputy County Manager, as a manager. I'm, his title might have been Director, I don't know that for sure. He certainly wasn't paid Director salary of the 29, so he was at a lower range than the Directors.
But he had the Director title.
And then also, I just want to make a clarification on, on your statement, if I may. The reclassifications are, are new initiatives and are in the, are in the budget. So the reclassifications that we're looking at are identified in the budget. And it's, it is a true statement that it's my intent to try to reclassify all employees.
Okay. Now, but, so the HR Director has, for at least the most recent history, the last few years, been a Director, and that's been his title. And the Procurement Director was a Manager though, until just recently. Am I right about that? Because I'm trying to, I'm trying to pull out the facts that have been stated here so I can under, so I can balance things in my mind. So the Procurement Director was a Manager until just recently. Am I wrong or right about that?
You're correct.
That's correct.
Okay. So the Procurement Director is getting a raise because that person, and I, I apologize, I'm not in procurement a lot, I don't know that person, so I apologize, but that person is being promoted essentially, is how I'm understanding the reason for this raise or this increase in pay. The HR Director is, is not necessarily being promoted, but because of this study, and to put all the Directors at 29, excluding the Directors or Managers that may report to us, we're going to give him a bump also. That's the logic that we're dealing with.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, with the exception, that is the logic, but with the exception of our, our engineering managers and attorneys that are higher than the 29.
And they're staying at some lower level, or what's the, what's going on with them?
There's nothing going on with them. They're staying at the same range as at they're currently at.
Okay.
Okay, just one more clarification.
Supervisor Angus?
Okay. So you're saying that you've made an allowance in the budget for these reclassifications? So besides the 2.5%, there is going to be a group of people who are even making more? Because when it was first approached to me about the, I thought that that was just it, the 2.5%. This is absolutely the first time I've ever heard that. So I'm just a little confused.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, we discussed when we were talking about what conditions you would find favorable to allow on across the Board, pay increase. One of yours was, you didn't want people getting two increases in the same year. And that was based on our discussion at the time, that we had certain employees who, because of studies that had been done, changes in their positions, were being recommended for reclassifications. Those are all listed in the new initiative pages that are in supporting your budget. And your concern was that somebody didn't get a reclassification or a promotion, and also the 2.5%. And that's why we included in the, in the rules for the 2.5% that you would not get the 2.5% if you were also getting a reclassification.
Well, I understood that was as of July 1st, so going backwards. Now we're talking about going forwards.
Well, we were talking about positions, we're in August, and we're approving a budget that starts in July.
Right.
Okay. The reclassifications that we are proposing in this budget would be effective July 1st, and would predate the condition of whether or not they would get the 2.5%. They won't get both, is the point that I'm trying to make. They would either get their reclassification, which was based on a job study, or if they weren't being reclassified and had met all the other conditions of six months of employment, satisfactory pay reviews, then they would get the 2.5%, but no one would get both.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you. First, I'd like to review Mr. Timko's contract to see where shop steward came in that contract anywhere, but
[laughing]
I guess the, I have the same concerns that the other Board members do, or some of the Board members do, that, that we're looking at this reclassification, because to me, we just changed their, their job titles. I mean, Supervisor Watson's the Chairman, and Supervisor Angus, Angus is the Vice Chair. We didn't give them any extra money, we just changed their, their names, so I have a problem with doing that. I think on the reclassification, that's a simple thing to do. ACOs, League of Cities and Towns all have, have these classifications out there, and I think that, I think we do a disservice, I mean, to all of our employees by giving a 2.5% raise just because they've been here. There's, there's no other reason than that. I think, I think that we have people, there are certain departments that are losing people. I brought up part of it today with cyber and IT is becoming a hot place where people are losing them left and right. Some of those might need to go up higher than, than other places. I know the Sheriff's Department has it, and I'm sure every department will have something with engineers, attorneys, all the rest of them. But I think we need to, just because we've paid off, or we're gonna pay off our, our jail, and we've, or, yeah, the jail, and we've found a million two, that we, or freed that million two up, we shouldn't be giving it away right away. I think we need to do the thing to see that people are paid for what they're doing, and they're being rewarded for giving service to the taxpayers, and until that time, we shouldn't be giving any money away. I mean, we can do this study, and people can come back, and maybe if we can't increase everybody the, the full amount that they should be, at least, we can say, hey, we are gonna get you to where, where you should be. That's, that's my whole thing.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson.
I have a question.
Supervisor Brotherton?
Okay. And I'm gonna ask myself this question also, because I want to ask the Board. Where are we headed? I think all of our Directors report directly to our County Administrator. And if our County Administrator does their evaluations and thinks that they deserve an increase in salary or reclass or whatever, if that, if that's his decision, are we gonna usurp our authority over him and deny that? How are we gonna handle this? Because I don't want to see this happening with whoever is recommended for an increase, and if it happens to come before the Board, we say no, based on whatever feelings we might have. I, I don't need an answer today, but it's something to ask ourselves.
If I could, if I could.
Thank you, Supervisor Brotherton.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'm going, I'm gonna attempt to respond to Supervisor Brotherton, because she obviously believes strongly about this, and I respect you for that. But my discussions, my comments have nothing to do with personalities. I mean, I don't even know the Procurement Director, and I think I've met Mr., the HR Director, Mr. Asuna, maybe a dozen times. I don't know these people. There is no, there's no personalities involved. What I'm coming from is from someone who has billed himself as, as a, as a person who stood for office as a fiscal conservative, and I'm trying to make sure that on something which is more than half our budget, a 2.5% increase on more than half our budget, which comes, which is gonna be, which followed by this reclassification study in the future, that I measure twice and I cut once. That's what I'm trying to do. That's my only motivation here. Now, when it comes to the, what I, I want to do here is, my personal belief is that if our expert, Mr. Timko, says we have the money, and our employees, as you have pointed out so well, coently, have not been without for five or more years, I want to give them that money. No one's, I don't think anyone here is really arguing against giving them the 2.5%. The only thing that's being debated is whether or not we give it to them as a permanent increase, and I think that would be ill-advised with this reclassification study, which is following in our wake someplace. When it comes to, so I'd prefer a one-time lump sum When it comes to, so I'd prefer a one-time lump sum payment. When it comes to the HR director and the procurement director, without saying whether they get a pay increase or not, I think I'd like to kick that a couple weeks, until the next meeting, so we can sit down and have some more in-depth detail, because the first I found out about it was, one, when I read the, and you're right, it is a July 24th letter. I pride myself in my memory, and I was wrong when I said July 16th. I apologize, Mr. Timko. When I read this, and then 15 minutes later, I get an email from a ranting constituent. So, so what I would like to do, so we can move this process along, and this is just me as being one, and, oh, one other point there. I do view ourselves, the board, to a very large degree, as being supervisors over the board of directors, or, excuse me, the various directors and department heads, because we are the board of supervisors. We supervise county government, every layer of it. And we did intentionally, I think, a few months ago, usurp some of the county manager's power, as indicated by calling the county administrator. I think Mike Hendricks is a great guy, the greatest guy in a long time. You know, he's an excellent bow hunter, I'm never going to say anything different. But, but, we did usurp his power, and this is exactly why we're having this conversation. So I would like to push the HR director and procurement director issue back until the next meeting. It's, whatever we do or don't do is going to be retroactive to July 1st, anyway. So it's not going to, if they get what, if Mr. Hendricks gets what he wants, or is recommended to this board, they're not going to be out anything. If he doesn't, if they don't, then they're still not going to be out anything, because no one's proposing a pay cut to them. So what I would like to do is approve the budget, make it a 2.5 percent lump sum payment, table the HR director and procurement director until the next meeting, and I probably should make that in the form of a motion.
Yes, you probably should.
Okay. I hereby move that we adopt the Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 213-080, adoption of the Mojave County Budget for Fiscal Year 2013-14, in the amounts recommended by staff for the general fund budget approved, as a modified lump sum budget, with the exception of tabling till our next regular meeting, any reclassification and increase in pay for the HR director and the procurement director, and converting the suggested 2.5 percent lump, excuse me, 2.5 percent permanent pay increase, instead to a one-time, non-recurring 2.5 percent lump sum payment to the employees, to be issued as soon as reasonably practicable.
Thank you, Supervisor Moss.
It doesn't look like I'm going to win this one.
[laughing] I really appreciate your efforts, and I applaud your efforts. And I'm so close to, to helping you out a little further. But it's my belief that our, that our employees, people that we work with, our associates, have been five years without any type of, of remuneration change. They're hard-working folks. And the 2.5 percent is certainly not a great deal of money, but it does recognize the efforts, the time, the pride that they put in their work. And it would be my, my wish that we could do the 2.5 percent, not in just one lump sum, but then continue thereafter.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll indulge me, I would like to submit a new motion, then.
Certainly. Mr. Chairman, if I could have Mr. Moss, or Supervisor Moss, before, just another thing besides employees. In our budget, we have very little amount for the cleanup of properties. We have, maybe somebody from Public Works wants to see how many properties we have that are backlog. Are we going to address this? Because we're getting a lot, a lot more, especially with the economy now, and we're falling way behind on health and safety issues with these, and I think we're getting libeling the county. We don't have very much money put aside for that. That's money that we can recoup. I mean, we do a lot, we spend more money, I believe, on the cleanup of the desert for BLM and everybody else than we do for actually taking care of, of our own properties. I don't know if that's something the board cares about or not, but it bothers me that we have that at all. We had this last one, I think that I dealt with, was years it took us to get it finally done. I mean, that, that's unacceptable.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, and I don't want to digress too far from our, our budget conversation. We developed, to try to address some of the board's concerns, we developed a property abatement action committee, which consolidated all the decision-makers. And we also funded that process. And as you see, what we do is we take the most severe cases in the county, and we, we bring them through the process, and we pursue those cases. And they've done a tremendous amount of good, and in being able to clean up the properties throughout the county. And I think our, our program is very, very good. I don't, right off the top of my head, recall the amount of monies that the county dedicates to that, but I believe it's, Nick, can you help me out?
I believe it's $100,000.
Yes. And as you see on your agendas, every meeting, almost, without exception, we have properties that the board approves us to go after, and that's part of the legal process. But if you'd like to...
Right. And I think what I was getting at was the fact that maybe that $100,000 isn't enough, maybe we need to look at, we have to take care of these things. And I'm saying that the program we have set up, and the people are doing a great job, but I think the funding is what's lacking. Now, we, we do put liens on, so we can, if we use the money from, say, the dump fees out there, where we borrow money from them, then we can replace that as we get our, go to court, you know, and either take the property and sell it, or get money back from the people. But I think, at least my opinion, is we might need to increase that, because $100,000 doesn't go very far anymore with, you know, cleaning up these properties. That was all I wanted to bring up.
Nick, can you, can you help me with the amount?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, no, we don't have $100,000. We get 50 cents on every ton of waste that is deposited in the landfill, so it averaged in the last year, maybe around $5,000 a month. And I'm, I'm giving a very rough estimate, so probably $60,000. And then we're decreasing that in next year's budget, so we're going to get 40 cents per ton. That's my recollection. So we're going to get probably, maybe, you know, more than $4,000 a month. So typically, we can abate one property per month. That's, that's the average rate. You had three liens in front of you today, where we put liens on the property, and they average about $4,000. That's roughly. Unfortunately, we don't get a good return on those liens, because these are properties like Administrator Hendricks pointed out, that these are the most visible, worst cases, where typically we can't find a property owner, there are no responsible parties, and there's nobody else to clean them up. So the liens are usually, usually we don't collect those liens, that's the truth. And there are other liens usually on these properties that take precedence, when, actually, when they sell the properties, ours are not in the front. So typically, right now, what we can do is average, that's what we have been averaging, about one property per, per month. That's for cleanups. And yes, we have several hundreds in our, in the queue, and we have maybe a half a dozen, two dozen really bad cases that, that we propose to address. And like, like Mike pointed out, we go through the abatement action committee and set priorities, where we have representatives from the county attorney's office, the sheriff's office, all departments that enforce, code enforcement. And so we try to set priorities county-wide.
Right, well, I understand, and I'm not, I'm saying you guys do a great job, I think you need more funding. If it's, the problem is that we are not, I was under the impression that we were collecting our money back when the land is sold, or we, we gone. If you're saying there are other liens against it that have precedence against us, now, obviously the county attorney's not doing their job to get us higher on the list, or we need to pass legislation that says if we're going in there on a health and safety issue, and there's somebody else sitting there with a second on it, they need to pay, you know, cough up that money. I mean, if there's a problem where we can't enforce that, then we need to change the law or something, or we're just taking the taxpayers' money and cleaning up properties for nothing. And that's, I don't agree with that at all.
I don't either.
That's all I had, I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention, that, that little bit of money we have out there, not getting it, and like Mr. Hunt's saying, we've got dozens of them that are extreme, that are, and it's going to get worse as years go by, so.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. As a matter of fact, the abatement committee was one that was put together about three years ago, and was kind of an offshoot of what we were doing with the race program, and trying to put everything together. I'm very proud of the abatement committee's actions over the last several years, and all the projects that they've done. So if we find ourselves mid-year and need to fund more to the abatement committee, I would certainly be in a position where I would say yes to moving some funds over from the contingency and fund them further. But thank you very much for your support. Supervisor Moss.
Yeah, I'm going to take another stab at a motion here. I move that we adopt Board of Supervisor Resolution 2013-080, adoption of the Mojave County Budget for Fiscal Year 2013-14, in the amounts recommended by staff, with the general fund budget approved as a modified lump sum budget, including the 2.5 percent pay increase for our employees, but tabling the reclassification of the Human Resources Director and Procurement Director until the next meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, seconded by Supervisor Angus. Very well put, very well done.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
And I'm just pointing out, I would like to point out, if I could, Mr. Chairman, the issue from, I don't believe anybody on this board, was not whether the employees got 2.5 percent. The issue was the method of delivery. That was the only issue. When it comes to the procurement director and the HR director, the issue is not personalities. The issue is, there's been a reclassification study, it was dropped in our lap in this most recent backup data, and I want to know more before I vote to send another $20,000 in management out the door.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Supervisor Moss, I am sorry.
Mister's good, Steve's good, too. Whatever.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Nay.
No.
I would recommend that we call, roll call vote?
It's 3-2.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Brotherton?
No.
Supervisor Moss?
Yes.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes. Okay, now we'll move down to item... Item 50. Discussion, possible action, establish the value of the alley abandoned under Resolution Number 2013-073 at $10. This is presented to us from the...
I don't think so.
Public Works Director, Steve Lutowski. Chair, would you entertain a motion?
Yeah, it is. I move that we establish the value of the, of the alley abandoned under Resolution 213-073 at $10. Due to the alley being wholly contained within a proposed Walmart site, developed under single ownership, and authorized the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors to sign the attached quitclaim deed in our backup materials, disposing of the abandoned alley to the abutting owner in Mojave Valley, District 5.
We have a motion and a second by Supervisor Johnson. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Lunch, do you want to wait for lunch, maybe? It's 2:00.
We can be done in a few minutes.
You think so? Oh, there's some bigger items, you know? Do you think you can, we can do it?
I think we could be done in a half hour.
Okay.
I think so, too.
Okay.
Okay. From that point, we move to item number 51. That's the discussion and possible action, approving Board Resolution 2013-107, and that is the subjecting the federal government and its United States Fish and Wildlife Service to licensing requirements to Mojave County's rabies animal control ordinance, in the event that the Mexican wolf, Canis lupus bailey, is introduced into Mojave County. Motion for discussion?
If I may, I would move to approve Board Supervisor Resolution Number 213-107.
Discussion, please.
Second for discussion.
For second discussion.
And a second for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Supervisor Brotherton?
Yes, I think I spoke with you earlier this morning, and told you that we had gotten several comments from the Livestock Association, and they really were not happy with the way the resolution was worded, and they had offered another resolution to maybe incorporate some of those other words into it, to make it a little, you know, a little tougher. So I had suggested that maybe we remove this from the agenda, or table it.
Certainly can table it.
And discuss it a little bit more.
And we have two people signed up to speak on it.
Okay.
Well, sorry for the premature motion.
But we have Butch Meriwether would like to speak on the issue. Reason I bring the issue to you is it's a very, very serious issue, and we've already had one resolution on this issue. Mr. Meriwether?
My name is Butch Meriwether, I live at 2225 South Dome Road, Golden Valley, Arizona. Supervisor Watson, Chairman, Supervisors and distinguished employees up there. I seldom get up here to speak before the board, and I know that my view will not coincide with yours. Many people use graphics when making a presentation before the Board of Supervisors, and I want to do so also. Hopefully I put this up the right way. Since there's no current Mexican gray wolves in Mojave County, I decided to use a photo of my northern timberland wolf that weighs about 155 pounds, about twice the size of a Mexican gray wolf, because some people had said that the Mexican gray wolf is the largest of the species, and it is not. I feel the Board of Supervisors have succumbed to the fear-mongering of most ranchers and a select few others. And I noticed that in the backup package, there is no map, which I'm told that there is a map of the area where they proposed to place the thing. Is the map available for display? Can we put it up on the monitor, please?
I'm sorry, but I don't have that map down here with me, but it's certainly available. Make that available to you this afternoon.
I personally believe the Supervisors have much more pressing issues that they need to tackle, instead of betting on the come line, as at a casino and shooting craps, thinking, going after the federal government, and releasing the wolves. The Board of Supervisors should worry more about the thousands of dogs in the county that are run wild, instead of on a leash, even though there's a leash law. The dogs probably kill more small game animals, small farm animals, and pets than the wolves would ever do. Maybe instead of going after the federal government in regard to wolves, maybe the Supervisors should go after the Arizona government and change the open meeting, I mean, the open range laws. Having cows run free causes more damage to personal property and lives than a couple of wolves could ever do. Thank you very much for my time.
Thank you, Mr. Meriwether. We have another person that would like to speak to this issue, and that's Craig Hamilton.
I'd like to just lay off a walkover.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion, I believe, to table this item.
Well, do you want me to close it, and then I have some discussion, too, if you want?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the discussion would be, I know there's some meetings coming up, shouldn't we have some kind of a resolution, so that we have some kind of a stance to kind of show where we're coming from before then? I mean, if, whether we could call, if you redo the resolution, and give you the authority to sign it, you know?
Yes, I believe, I'll be attending this supposed kickoff of this event in Albuquerque on the 8th and 9th. I believe also that we have, one of our staff members can be going.
Carl Taylor.
Carl Taylor will be going on behalf of the Development Services Department, to get the information precisely from the kickoff event people, and it would certainly help to have some type of resolution to carry with. And I do share with Supervisor Brotherton her desire to strengthen the resolution.
Well, that was the MLA.
The MLA.
Very strongly.
Very strongly recommended.
Recommended that.
Well, I, I think we should strengthen it, too, personally.
Certainly.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
And I bring this, and I didn't bring this to you as... And I bring this, and I didn't bring this to you as an entirety. This is to voice the start of discussion, so that's the basis of it. So thank you.
I think Chairman Watson preempted what I wanted to say, which is, because he's way ahead on this issue, is just because we approved this resolution doesn't mean we can't do another resolution at the next meeting, which has strengthened and takes cares of the defect. Am I wrong about that?
Well, we have their meetings coming up before our next meeting.
Hildy and I are gonna be going to the meeting in St. John's, the 15th, because that's where all the Arizona players are gonna be.
So can we have a special meeting two days from now to deal with every approved resolution?
Well, actually, we've got a resolution concerning the gray wolf, I believe, and that was issued, what, February?
March 17.
I didn't think we did a resolution then.
Yes. Yes, there's been one resolution done on the gray wolf. We could, I would suppose, take that position with us to this meeting and then report back to you what occurred at that meeting in order then to have a strength in resolution. Is there some further day?
You don't think there's enough time to do another one, a strong one, so you have it with you when you go to Albuquerque?
Well, I'll be leaving Wednesday.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I, Attorney Exstrom, could we go ahead and give the authority to the Chairman and staff to strengthen up this resolution and to give the Chairman the authority to sign it? I mean, we can always rescind it if it goes crazy, I mean.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I believe you can. Hit some specifics if you would. I mean, clearly, it's our objection to introduction of the gray wolf in this area. That's the substance of it. And if you can give any further specific direction to Supervisor Watson, I will work with him and try to get something finished so you can take it to Albuquerque.
Go ahead and make a... Would you like to put that in a motion?
Okay. I'd make a motion to go ahead and approve the resolution with the, to be signed by the Chairman after the consideration of suggestions from the other Board members that are, were made here today.
And that would be through Bill Exstrom, the County Attorney's Office?
Right. I'm sure if that's, if the Board members can do that within, you know, quickly as possible.
That would also keep us within the realm of the open meeting law.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I believe there is a proposed resolution that Joy Brotherton, Supervisor Brotherton, mentioned a few moments ago from the Cavillman's Association. Maybe use that as a basis for the modifications?
Certainly. Could certainly use that as a template. Okay? There being no further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 52. Discussion, possible action, authorizing the Board of Supervisors Resolution 2013-106, the adoption of the new modern digital seal as the new official seal of Mojave County and direct the clerk of the Board to file the seal with the county recorder and the Secretary of State. Further allow county business to continue to be undertaken utilizing the existing hard paper stock and the existing seal until exhausted to minimize the cost of transitioning to the new seal. We bring this to you today to update many of what we're doing on the digital front, so if we could have Nate... Well, motion for discussion?
Motion to discuss.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? If we could have Nathan McDaniel come down and explain why it's necessary.
Morning, members of the Board. Chairman Watson. The item that's before you today, item 52, is basically an item to adopt a new Mojave County seal. Information took it upon itself, I don't know, maybe a year or so ago, to start working on a new design that would be more modern and primarily be more optimized for use in small print, large print, black and white, and as a seal that everybody in the county could standardize on to, I don't know, have a consistent, modern look for the county. Matt, will you throw up the old seal? So on the screen, this is the old seal. It's currently the seal that's engraved above you, right there. And the idea or the strategy on developing the new seal was to kind of stick to the same design without major, massive modifications. So if, Matt, you can throw up the new seal. Here's the new seal, if you want to take a look. And visually, it's crisp. It's a higher resolution. It keeps to the original form, primarily some minor alterations to the mountains, but this is essentially a version of what is called the Arizona Territory Seal. And right now, Mojave County and the Arizona Corporation Commission are two entities in the state that are still utilizing a version of the Territory Seal. And the state of Arizona, they have their own seal, and they went away from the Territory Seal years ago.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
I just have one. So is there any real cost involved in this? I mean, do we have to change that? Do we...
Well, I think in the item, Mr. Hendricks and Gary have put some verbiage in the item that basically says, "We'll continue to utilize the existing seal and the existing stock of all of the paper and business cards and, you know, exhaust the amount of money we've spent on existing materials that have the old seal, and moving forward, we'll adopt the new seal." So, I mean, if we did want to get the seal behind you on the wall changed, yeah, there would be a cost associated with that.
Are there many of these kinds of things around the county?
I don't think so. The, right now, there's only two that I know of that are of that quality. One is in the Executive Conference Room in this building and that one. But I'm sure there's some other seals throughout the county and Public Works. Sign Shop can probably give you a better list of all of the signs throughout the county.
Mr. Chairman, if I could. First, Nathan, I'd like to apologize to you and to the viewers. For those who weren't aware, Nathan had to come up here about an hour or so ago and tell me to stop clicking my pen because he was receiving phone calls from viewers that they thought they were having sound problems. So, thank you, Nathan. Secondly, I think that seal is absolutely beautiful. It is crisp. It does pop. My grandfather was a sign contractor in Phoenix. I worked for him growing up during the summers and all through college and law school, and I think that's a seal that if it was on a car or if it was out, it would grab the eye very quickly and would communicate. Sometimes, we get a little too busy because we think we're, our art gets a little too busy because we see it slow, stationary. We don't realize the effect when you're driving by real fast is you don't get that much detail. I think it was an excellent job. And finally, if you keep dressing that way, you're probably gonna go for Mike's job, so I'd be worried if I were you, Mike.
And what would the Board entertain?
I move that we adopt or authorize, adopt and authorize Board of Supervisor Resolution 213-2013-106, adoption of the new modern digital seal as the new official seal of Mojave County and direct the clerk of the Board to file the seal with the county recorder and the Secretary of State, further allowing county business to continue to be undertaken utilizing the existing hard paper stock and the existing seal until exhausted to minimize the cost of transitioning to the new seal.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second by Supervisor Angus. Questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 53. Discussion and possible action regarding the approval work session for the Board of Supervisors to be scheduled September 3rd, 2013, to discuss new changes to the Community Development Block Grant Program with the county and the state staff, proposed method of distribution of funds for Mojave County and the cities, proposed allocation for Mojave County CDBG funds for the Supervisors' districts for 2014. Motion for discussion?
I move to discuss.
We have a motion. I'll second the discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Ms. Angus?
Okay. We get these block grants. It's a federal program, and we've had a formula for dispersment, and over the last few years, the amount of the money has, you know, drastically gone down. And so I've been asked to put together a workshop so that Ms. Duranso, who is in charge of the grants, could come and explain to us what staff's ideas are for future dispersment, how we're gonna go about it. Now, because it used to be three districts, and now that we're five. Do you want to come down? I didn't even see you there.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Chairman of the Board and Supervisor Angus and members of the Board, we have requested Supervisor Angus, who sits in the Executive Committee for WACOG, to put this on the agenda. We have received a yearly method distribution from WACOG, and we're soon gonna have to start the fiscal year 2014. There've been a lot of changes in our Community Development Block Grant Program, primarily the reduction of funds. We would like to revisit the agreement we have with the cities and Colorado City with the distribution of funding. There's also a state requirement that we may not be able to provide more than three projects for one application. So there's been a lot of changes in the program that may affect our ability now to be able to identify projects for the next fiscal year 2014. So hopefully the work session, we're gonna be able to discuss this with you in a very informal setting, all the changes, so that when we roll out the public hearing in October for the next fiscal year, we are ready to tell the public on how our program's gonna be managed in Mojave County. It would also give Ms. Angus the ability to go before the WACOG Executive Committee, Executive Board, who will decide the method of distribution of the funding, on what our position would be with regards to the distribution of funding within the cities and Mojave County.
Thank you very much.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Johnson?
Ms. Duranso, what makes you so special? I have to have a special meeting. Why couldn't this just be put on a regular agenda? Because if we have to give consensus to Ms. Angus to go back, we're gonna have to have a board meeting, official meeting, to vote on anything. So wouldn't it be cleaner and easier if we just made this item 44 on our next agenda or whatever? Having a special day just for you?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor Johnson. I am special, so thank you.
I'm sure he says that with a much gracious heart. I...
We could do that. We could do it in a formal Board of Supervisor meeting, and we could discuss that. I was just hoping that we could get the state staff, who would be coming also to our work session. There was even a discussion on whether we could involve the cities in a discussion in a very informal setting before we make a formal action, so they could also bring it back to their city council members. So if the Board chooses not to have a work session, but instead have a formal agenda item, we could do that as well.
As the new representative on the WACOG Board, I would very much appreciate a special workshop to get all of the information, since I'm gonna be the one to go before them and, you know, plead or whatever our case. So I am very for the special session. Sorry.
Well, and I guess, Mr. Chairman, going along with that is, you talk about getting with the cities. The cities, they're part of the formula. So we, as a county, need to decide what we, as a county, are gonna do, irregardless of what the cities are gonna do, and then our representative has to go down and, you know, build the coalition or whatever else. I mean, I think you're turning this into a circus, Mr. Anso.
Supervisor Johnson and members of the Board, I think the issue of whether we're gonna invite the cities or not is just a suggestion. I think there's a lot more detailed issues that we could discuss with the members of the Board. And you're right, it can be an internal issue, and it could be that we are taking a different position from the cities. But in my feeling is in order for Ms. Angus to build that coalition, so that whatever we want to happen will happen on the Executive Board and the WACOG, we need the support of the cities. I think it's very important to note that the impression right now we're having is not so much to change the allocation with the cities, but primarily for Colorado City.
Hold on. I understand that. I mean, I just, I just think it should be an agenda item, so we can actually vote on something to give, give the direction.
That's the prerogative of the Board. If you would rather have that as opposed to work session, we would do that as well.
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
I have a question for Mr. Anso, if I could, please, because I did serve on the WACOG Board for four years, and I'm familiar with the, with the process. And I'm just asking, Mr. Anso, has anything changed the complexity such that it couldn't be explained in 15 minutes?
There are several changes. We have the funding source. Right now, as part of your packet, you have the method of distribution for fiscal year 2013. And with that, there's already, we used to receive a million dollars in the entire Mojave County, for Mojave County alone, okay? And that was easy to manage the projects. Right now, we're down to fiscal 2013, only $436,000 for each entity in Mojave County. So one, you have the reduction of funding. Two, you also have the method of distribution with the cities, which we have agreed on for many years. And sometimes, there's a feeling like we need to revisit that method of distribution by now, specifically with Colorado City. The third two is the implementation of the CDBG program on a state level. They're saying to us, you cannot have more than three projects. The fact that we have five districts now, and there is an impression that each district would receive a project from the CDBG funding, that is an issue that we need to discuss. So before we can go to have a public hearing with the public and say, "Give me all your projects," we need to decide whether internally, even with the Board of Supervisors, they will agree to either alternate, or are we gonna have a project for the entire county? Are we gonna divide it between two districts? Those are the internal things that we could discuss, and we could discuss it in the work session. But again, it's your prerogative. We could make the work session into a public meeting if you wish to do so.
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Moss?
I mean, I echo Supervisor Angus's comments, and I don't even have the advantage of having been on the Board even for a brief time, so I really would like a chance to engage with the cities and the other Supervisors and have a freewheeling, informal discussion. And then, I think Mr. Johnson, Supervisor Johnson's comment is very well taken. Can't we just schedule this or agendize this for action after the workshop? Because that way, the workshop, we finish it, and then we go into formal action when it's all said and done. And that way, we kill both birds. We could take care of both issues.
Mr. Chairman?
We have to have a public...
Right. I think, I mean, if it's on the agenda, we can have, we can invite the cities. We can make it like a set time, say, 10:30, we're gonna discuss CDBG grants, so if the cities or anybody wants to show, and then have all your discussion, and then as soon as that's over, we have an action item. We don't have to have a...
And I believe you're trying to identify either August 19th or some other regular meeting date?
That's what I, I mean...
No, that's September 13, sir. We changed it to September 13, because you have a workshop for...
What I'm indicating is trying to clarify Supervisor Johnson's process, and I think what he wants is to have it at a regular meeting, such as the one on August 19th, or a regular meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, right.
I still stick with, I would like a workshop, just because we're new and it's, there are big changes, and it is complicated. So I would still like to go with the workshop.
I'll second your motion.
So, I mean, just to clarify on item 53, is we, are we considering this work session on September 3rd?
September 3rd.
3rd or 13th? Because I heard 13th a few minutes ago.
Well, it says September 3rd.
I'm sorry, 3rd, September 3rd.
I move that we schedule and approve a work schedule for the Board of Supervisors to be scheduled on September 3rd, 2013, to discuss the new changes to Community Development Block Grant CDBG program with county and state staff, proposed method of distribution of funds for Mojave County and the cities, proposed allocation of Mojave County CDBG funds for the Supervisors' districts for fiscal year 2014, in addition to scheduling an action item following the close of the workshop.
Great. Motion?
Second.
Second? Second by Supervisor Angus? Question?
Question?
Discussion?
When you're saying, set an action item, you mean for the next, next meeting, right? Next Board of Supervisors meeting. You're not gonna call a special meeting right after the work session?
No, no, I meant right after our work session, we have a meeting, and we vote on whatever we decided to do.
Can we do that?
Well, we don't have to do that.
But could we? I mean, is it...
If it's on the agenda, and we decide to do something that we need to do right then and there at the workshop, we have that option. If it's on the agenda, and we decide not to do something following the workshop, we just look at it and we walk out the room. I mean, so it just gives us more options.
You have the option of taking action or not?
We have...
Okay.
At the, at the, at the meeting. We don't have to take action, but we'll have the option if it's on the agenda. We don't have to take action, but we'll have the option if it's on the agenda.
Okay. Is we still have the same motion that we have to amend?
I think I said it exactly right.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. We do have a Board of Supervisor meeting on September 3rd, so we are hoping to hold the work session after the Board of Supervisor meeting and regroup to, I think I lost the Supervisor Moss's motion there.
I read item 53 and added, with the addition of attaching an action item following the conclusion of the meeting.
Of the meeting of the workshop?
Huh?
Of the workshop?
Yeah.
Will be, is that, can we do that? Mr. Ex...
That's going to be like a special meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Angus, as long as it's noticed. That's your only condition.
All right.
Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Item number 54, discussion, possible action. Acknowledged receipt of the Attorney General's opinion, 111-004, concerning House Bill 2178 and gift clauses. Supervisor Angus?
Okay. Well, motion, second.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, this has been continued from a couple of different meetings, and since we last discussed it, we got an opinion from the Attorney General, and that he has deemed it that he, his belief is it is unconstitutional due to the special law clause of the Arizona State Constitution. Excuse me. So this motion, there's actually two. Do I make motion now, or do we discuss first? Somebody?
Either way.
I want to make, first I want to make a motion to acknowledge receipt of Attorney General's opinion, I-13-004, regarding HB 2178's constitutionality in regard to the special law clause of the Arizona State Constitution, and direct staff to make proper notifications to the affected property owners.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
The next part of this deal is that we have to decide, county attorney's office has to decide how the best way to resolve all sort of the loose threads of this are. Right now, just because the Attorney General said it's unconstitutional, it's still on the books. Anyone could lay claim. So my thoughts are to tie it up as quickly as possible. I know that the county attorney's office has been working many, many years on this and have had involvement in it on all different angles. So my second part of this motion is to appoint an outside counsel, Paul Lankowski, at a raise of $200 per hour, as special counsel to the Board of Supervisors, for the purpose of reviewing legal files associated with HB 2178, including pending lawsuits, and to work with Mojave County Attorney's Office to bring legal action to conclusion, to be paid from the general administration account.
Second.
A motion and a second. Questions or discussion? I have a question. Is there any type of limitation of dollars involved, or is there some type of reporting mechanism that would be entertained in this?
I have, you have to tell me.
If I could make a comment, Mr. Chairman? I believe that it might be wise to have Mr. Lankowski send a copy of his monthly billing statement to both the Chairman of this Board, Mr. Hendricks, and Mr. Ekstrom, for review on a monthly basis. If we're the client, we can let him go at any time if things got out of hand. And if we, and as an attorney, we're supposed to generate monthly billing statements and provide them to our clients. So that would give us a quick mechanism in order to pull the plug if it looks like things are getting out of hand.
Right. And I just want to reiterate, this is a narrowly scoped advisory function right now. Just so we can get an idea how to move forward, then I expect, fully expect the county attorney's office to be able to fulfill a lot of those things.
And if I can, as a private practice attorney, Mr. Lankowski will have to provide the county a fee agreement, and we can actually spell that out within the fee agreement. But I think Mr. Ekstrom's probably the guy he should deal with on that, as this is something more in his line of expertise.
Any further questions or comment? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried. Item number 55, discussion, possible action, update on the internal investigation into the Lincoln Financial Group voluntary life insurance benefits issue.
Could I make a motion?
Motion for discussion.
If I was, I could make just a direct motion.
Sure.
I would like to direct, make a motion that the Board of Supervisors direct Supervisor Angus, Chairman Watson, Attorney Bill Ekstrom, and Mike Hendricks to prepare a press release dealing with, an appropriate press release dealing with the findings of that investigation.
We have a motion?
I second.
Can I second by Supervisor Bretherton? Questions?
Only question would be, I think we just agendized it for executive session only, we didn't make it an action item, didn't we?
Mr. Chairman, I think the star just designates that the item will be discussed in executive session. It doesn't preclude you from taking action on it at the open meeting.
Oh, because I placed it on, I thought that was what I put on the agenda. I just want to make sure we're okay.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Any further questions or comment? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 56, discussion, possible action, the process for review and approval of executive session minutes.
More for discussion, Mr. Chairman?
We have a motion, I'll second for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Supervisor Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, I place this on the agenda. Right now, we have executive session with limited amount of notes that are taken, that are subject to review with the proper documentation. The one fly in the ointment that I see is that we do not do a review of those minutes, so that we have no idea until somebody asks to see them and they get a court order to look at them. So I'm making, or asking, I guess, the county attorney for direction on how we can go about review of those executive session minutes, so that we're all in agreement to what has been discussed in executive session.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, of course, those minutes are confidential. However, each board member, whether you attend the meeting or not, is entitled to see the minutes and review the minutes, as are anyone else who's in attendance at the meeting. So I suppose what we could do is have the clerk provide you with copies of the minutes in some format that it can't be distributed, so you can review it. And then if you have questions about the content of the minutes, you can send it back to the clerk, and we will review that with the clerk and amend the minutes if it's appropriate.
That sounds fine to me, I don't know if...
But I think as long as there's a provision that it does remain confidential.
It's confidential, by law.
Right. Any further question?
Excuse me. So would this be a hard copy sent confidentially to the supervisors?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Prince, we'll work out a way to do that. I haven't thought that through yet.
Okay.
There would be no action then from that, Mr. Chairman?
No action? Item number 57, discussion, possible action, direct staff to work with the city of Lake Havasu on an agreement for future board consideration to permit public-private development of a sports field on part of a 40-acre parcel, 114-05-101, Section 20, Township 13, Range 19 West, under the Bureau of Land Management lease to Lake Havasu City. Motion for discussion?
So moved.
We have a motion, I'll second the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Supervisor Moss, you have entered.
Thank you. What I'm attempting to do, and what I would like the Board to agree to, is, many people may be aware, or may not be aware, that we're doing a project in Mojave Valley, Arizona, which is a partnership with another government entity, which is River Valley High School, the Colorado River Union High School District, in addition to many private individuals and businesses, nonprofits, and foundations. And they're building a park. And that park is midway through, and it's going to be a beautiful 38-acre facility for the residents of Mojave Valley, Arizona, which is going to have more or less a focus of being a sports field, but there will be family amenities and whatnot there, too. During the course of my going up and down the Colorado River over the last several months, I ran into the soccer league in Lake Havasu. And for those of you who may not be aware, I'm the non-paid volunteer regional commissioner of the Bullhead City-Fort Mojave Soccer League. And they were amazed at the fields that we had available to us in our area compared to Lake Havasu. Lake Havasu is known to be a very financially affluent area compared to other portions of Mojave County, and my area, Fort Mojave and Bullhead City, not so much so. And Supervisor Angus's comparison, not so much so. And they were shocked that we, with less advantages, could have basically, I think it's 37 acres of grass, not counting parking lots and Ramadas and things like that. So, and the reason we did it was various government entities and nonprofits and foundations and private businesses and private individuals all came together and said, you know, "Don't worry me with regulations or bids or whatnot, I'm just going to build the darn thing." And I would like to, and then, and then they added their question to their concern, is currently, the soccer league in Lake Havasu is playing at what is now ASU's campus. And ASU has essentially told them that, "You guys can use the fields for as long as there's fields available, but whether it's this year, or next year, or the year after, with no advance notice, we're going to take the fields, because we'll need more parking and more building, because we intend upon expanding this campus." Which is perfectly fine from an ASU standpoint. If I was ASU, I'd want to expand too, if the demand existed. But that means there isn't going to be appropriate field space for an 800-kid soccer league in Lake Havasu City, Arizona. And I met with their board, and they asked me for help. And I then looked, because I am, no offense, Buster, but I'm very partial to District 5. I looked for potential government partners in the unincorporated area of District 5, in Havasu Heights and Desert Hills and whatnot. And there isn't really anyone who could agree to do the maintenance end of things, if and when we could get anything up and running. Lake Havasu, on the other hand, seemed excited by it. And this isn't about District 5 or District 3, this is about the residents of Lake Havasu City, Arizona, who are also county residents. So the city, after they indicated a willingness to engage in discussions, and having talked with the soccer league and being assured by them and other people within the community that the private sector would come together, much like it has come together in areas of Mojave Valley and Bullhead City, said, "Steve, we'd like to sit down and try to work something out," which is why this is on the agenda. This has nothing to do with us saying we want to pay X amount of dollars towards the project. In fact, I specifically declined to do that, because it would weaken our bargaining position as the whip goes down. This is giving staff the ability to meet with city staff, to meet with private businesses, to meet with nonprofit corporations and foundations, to talk about building 40 acres of park, whether it's soccer fields, which is my preference, but there's also possibilities for baseball fields and softball fields, because it's not my vision, it's what do the residents of Lake Havasu City really need. To talk about it, what would it cost? What would be the investment needed to make this happen? Where is that investment coming from? That's what this motion's all about, is to allow Mr. Hendricks, or Mr. Latauski, or whoever else is in charge of these sort of things, to talk to the city about this. And to try to work out a plan to bring that to the Board, whether it's next month or next year, however long it takes, and to say, "Hey, look, we have something which is just as good as a deal as to what we're doing down in Mojave Valley." And so this is about. I want to authorize our employee to go to work. And I'd be ready, willing to answer any questions from anybody on this particular point.
I guess, if I may, I guess my first question would be, what do you anticipate the cost of this endeavor to be?
Well, I think there's some materials in the backup, which says 1.6 million, if that we were to do everything and bid it out, would be the county's estimate. I'm not sure if that's right or not. I'll tell you that every time that we, like we do with projects at Rotary Park and Bullhead City, the city slaps a price tag on it, and we get it done for less than half. And then the half that we do have to pay out is mostly in-kind contributions and things like that. So it's, you don't know. When a government bids a job, their hands are, I think, tied in a lot of ways. You can't tell John, who has a bulldozer or a blade, to go out there and do something on a Saturday and throw him a case of beer for the privilege. When you have, when you have private-public sector partnerships, you do have a lot more flexibility. And this is to see whether we can get someone named John with a blade to donate the time, things like that, to see if we can build a very cost-effective park project for county residents who happen to live within Lake Havasu City, Arizona. So there is, there is no cost that I'd be willing to commit to, since we're way too soon. This is about having the discussion, so we can find out what the costs might be.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Johnson?
My concerns are, we gave Lake Havasu City 1,100 acres of land for them to do whatever they wanted. They haven't, you know, however they do their sports fields, they haven't built a soccer field out there yet. They built dog parks. They're putting white sand on the beaches now, but they haven't built any soccer fields. I think the counties, at least my perspective of the county's park system, is Davis Camp, the Wallopys, there's a few other little small ones that are basically utility places where the family can go out without having to make a, well, some of them you have to make reservations to go and get the place because of the quietness of it. But when we start getting into sports fields, then I think we're changing the scope of what we do as a county, because now you have leagues and that sort of thing to deal with. We just talked about this morning, raising the fees, because we're having a hard time with finances with the park system. And I know Supervisor Moss said it's not going to be this year or not, but I hate to get us involved in negotiations, or somebody to think that we're going to be using taxpayer money to, or the park fund money to support these fields in Lake Havasu. That'd be my only concern. And maybe it wouldn't be so much not getting involved in this, as maybe we need to define what our park system is, what we want it to see it, you know, in case we're changing that, would be my only concern.
I can answer part of that question. When I spoke with Charlie Cassens, I think it was a little over a month ago, about this. And I told him specifically that Mojave County, Arizona, is, and from my perspective, and only my perspective, is in the business of providing amenities to its residents, but we don't have the funding to maintain. So we get a park in there, which the county helps build, we can't maintain it. And he looked at me, and I believe this is part of the discussions that Mr. Hendricks would have with the city, to confirm this and put it down black and white, it's one piece of the puzzle, and there are many, many pieces, is that, yeah, if the county got involved with this park project, the city of Lake Havasu City is going to have to commit that they will do the maintenance. It would not be something coming out of the county pocket. But that is one, that's why we have to have this discussion, so things can be formalized, brought back to the Board, discussed, find out whether the Rotary Clubs and the Quanian Clubs and private contractors and everyone else want to get involved, and what is the end result of the nut that we have to bite, that we have to take care of in order to make this happen, happen? Because right now, we're running in ignorance. The purpose of number 57 on this agenda is to say to the citizens of our county and the citizens of Lake Havasu, this is exact, get the information together, build it up over time, and bring all those answers back to us. We're not committing to anything except to discuss, work on it, and then bring something back to the Board, so that we know exactly what we have to do, if anything. And if we decide it's not something we want to get into, we say no. But right now, I think we should at least say, "Let's talk about it."
I guess I don't have too much of a problem with the idea of talking about it. But as far as committing any type of funding to another park, we've got our Mojave County park system, which need, which is in dire need of reinvestment.
Yes.
And we also have Mojave County Fairgrounds, which is in dire need of continued investment. And so, while I understand the direction you're trying to go in here, it might be also a good idea for us to prioritize what, maybe what we need to be doing with our park system.
When it comes to, and when it comes to what we're doing with our park systems, the fairgrounds and all the rest of that, I have absolutely no objection sitting down and talking about all that. Because I believe the purpose of government, amongst other things, is to provide amenities to the public that they can't provide for themselves. But this is potentially, and I stress the word potentially, one piece of the puzzle. But this is potentially, and I stress the word "potentially," one piece of the puzzle. So all we're saying is, to the staff is, yeah, when Havasu wants to talk, when contractors want to staff, talk, you're allowed to have a seat at the table. But they can't commit for us, but they can talk, and they can bring a package to us. Now, I would prefer, and I think I mentioned this to you before, Supervisor Watson, is that I think that we do need to do things with our fairgrounds. I think we could be the rodeo capital of the Southwest if we did things properly. Whether things are being done properly or not is something that can be debated, okay? But those are things that we need to look at. I think this is another thing that we should also be looking at. And so I'd like to have, and if I can, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to work with the city of Lake Havasu City on an agreement for future consideration, board consideration to permit a public-private development of sports fields in part of 40-acre parcel APN 114-015-010 in Section 20, Township 13 North, Range 19 West, under the Bureau of Land Management lease to Lake Havasu City, and bring back, whether it's next month or next year, bring back the parameters of what's being discussed for future board consideration.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
No.
And I'm afraid I'm in that direction, too. Motion denied. Item number 58, adoption of Board Resolution Number 2013-089, approve the development agreement, developer's agreement for Prairie Heights Track Number 3068-A, being a recorded subdivision of a portion of Section 19, Township 22, North Range 16 West, to ensure completion of subdivision improvements in the Kingman vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona, tabled by our board at the July 15th meeting, and... Entertained a motion for discussion.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I actually move that we approve Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 213-2013-089, the approval of the developer's agreement for Prairie Heights Track 3068A, being a recorded subdivision of a portion of Section 19, Township 22 North, Range 16 West, to ensure completion of subdivision improvements in the Kingman City, Mojave County, Arizona.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Getting adjourned.
Oh, my gosh, finally.